Those on Zoom may provide public comment. If you want to comment during the public comment portion of any item, click on Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute you. You will have three minutes to comment, subject to the chair's discretion. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudehne, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next, we have roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Vice Chair Davies?
Here.
And Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
And for the record, Chair of State Elcock and Commissioner Barstow are absent.
Next, we will have oral communications. This time is provided for people to address the commission or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the commission may respond to statements. Any request that requires commission action will be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. I will start with those in the room. Then we'll hear from those on Zoom. Please line up if you wish to speak. I will allow three minutes for each speaker. Does anybody in the room want to speak to something not on our agenda?
My name is Fred Wise. I believe this is not on the agenda. I have spoken about this before to the Planning Commission. I'm going to speak again. I'm going to continue to speak until I think I'm heard. We have a situation in city policies which I regard as flagrant violations of the Brown Act. I bring it up for one specific reason. I think it's going to result in a lawsuit against the city. I think that this will further delay the adoption of the Gateway Plan, which is not in anyone's interest, in my opinion, as well as diverting staff time and costing money. The Planning Commission should be aware that the version of a plan, which is in their packet, is different from the one that's online. Further, I'm going to, I said that-- The Brown Act specifically says it is not up to staff to determine what the public and what the commission can hear. The, it is the person-- to give all information to the public. Anything other than that is a diversion of the process. I'm talking here about the process. As I said, as I've said earlier, the city of Los Gatos has put this, their building element, housing element, excuse me, as a voter referendum. I don't think that's a good idea. I feel that with every passing week, with every passing violation, we're getting further towards a situation that is untenable. I think I have, as I've said earlier, I'm not a lawyer. I have five instances of conditions of court cases that have resulted in conditions by which the city was required to rescind actions. I don't want it to see that happen here. I'm being emphatic. I think this is a large situation. Further, I've talked to the Planning Commission about your experience, which I regard highly. I think it is up to you to direct staff on this. I think staff is flagrantly violating the Brown Act. I don't consider this to be an opinion. I consider this to be a fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I would like to address the importance of laws in our city government. I'm not sure whether you all swore allegiance to the state of California and the laws, but I know the city council has. They have to raise their right hand before they take office. I think it's very important for everyone to understand the laws and do their best to learn about them and then, and use them in your decision-making. I was a little upset last week as far as the city council vote because they volunteered the fact that, by asking the staff, did the city, did the Planning Commission approve of or permit Phase 1? So that was a signal of the fact that they didn't read anything as far as what the Coastal Commission had responded as conditions, not just approval. So it's pretty frustrating that you're spending a lot of time on issues. The city's staff is spending a lot of time in the ultimate decision. A lot of these issues was the city council. And when they don't even take the time to read their material or have any knowledge of what's going on other than what the staff has recommended, it's a real failure of city government and democracy, in my opinion. So I also address this from the standpoint of, I mean, you have a lot of issues that are coming up with the general plan, coastal, you know, element. And I think it's very important for you to understand what those elements that are part of the general plan are and not just something that's, you know, check that we're going to basically just make some minor adjustments and just accept that. You really need to be knowledgeable in those things because they're all very important decisions that you're making this, this year, at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. So I see problems even with addressing, you know, the Coastal Commission and what their view is. There's particular views on what can be built in coastal areas and what heights. And I think that you need to take the time to really understand that before you make any decisions in the future about that. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Lisa. I sent a letter to the city council last week, and not a single member of the council. I also sent it to members of the Planning Commission, but it was mainly to the city council. And not a single member of the council responded. And my letter was asking you all, you guys, to all please pay attention to sea level rise. And Michael Mochi had put an article in the Mad River Union that I think you all should read. And he was talking about the danger to the wastewater treatment plant and that we're going to need to relocate it. And I got some confirmation of what he said during the weekend. I went to a class on sea level rise with Alderon Laird. And what he said did not sound good. His assessment was not good. So anyway, I'm going to read from what I wrote here so I don't forget. He's, Alderon Laird is one of the foremost experts on sea level rise in our area. He said that almost all of the Gateway area will be inundated by 2120, 100 years from now. But in fact, it could happen a lot sooner. So he said that almost all of sea level rise will happen in the next 20 years as the dikes are overtopped. By 2120, it will just get deeper. So we need to be planning where to relocate this, the wastewater treatment plant now, today. And it's likely that the only viable place to relocate it is in the southern section of the Gateway area, such as the Beryl District. And I know that you all have put so much effort and thought into this Gateway Plan, and I appreciate all your work. But sometimes, you know, you just got to recalibrate. And you got to think, yes, we have a moral obligation to build housing. I was for those eight stories, you know, in the beginning. I thought, okay, we can trade for affordable housing. But we've got to also, we also have a moral obligation to keep the city safe for the residents. Fires and, you know, what happens when the wastewater treatment plant is inundated? We have to be thinking about that, too. That's also a moral obligation. And even if those dikes aren't overtopped, we will see rising groundwater levels and saltwater intrusion into the wells. So high-rise buildings on mud flats is not a wise idea. That's what Alderon said. And he gave the example of the beachfront buildings in Florida that collapsed due to saltwater intrusion. And he said, he said, does it make any sense to invest public money on a part of the city that will ultimately be part of the bay? And he also said that he doesn't care to play games. He thinks staff may be playing games with the, I don't know. But he said that maybe playing games with the probabilities. But he prefers to look at the science. And the science says we can expect at least 10 feet of sea level rise, if not more, and we need to prepare now. So I'd like you, we do have alternatives. Susan Ornellis has a plan.
Thank you for your comments.
So please think outside the box.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I want to thank all those previous speakers. They brought up a lot of very important topics. And moving on, I just want to speak of the L Street corridor. I believe that it's a very viable area to be a linear park. I mean, there are a number of open spaces to north and south that can be enhanced and will serve well, you know, if the Great Redwood Trail comes through. In the true spirit of rail banking, it's not normally designed to be a situation where you use that to put a road in and do an expansion. I mean, that's normally for the purpose of being for a Rails-to-Trails corridor, an improvement, someplace where, basically a better place that people can congregate and people can travel through. In this case, we have an opportunity for it to be a linear park, and it will serve the entire infill, the future infill that's coming to this area. You know, and beyond that, I mean, the Great Redwood Trail will also interconnect with the Coastal Trail. And so we're looking at something that is really statewide. And we have an opportunity, if the city of Arcata, to put forward something that welcomes them, something way more than just this street that barges through and reduces our Class 1 trail to a Class 4 trail. I think it's something we should be thinking about. And I know it's something that you're not necessarily making a decision on tonight, but I'd hope it could impress upon you. We do have a petition going right now. There's an online petition. It's garnering some speed. It hasn't been on very long. And we also have a hand-carrying petition. And we are garnering a lot of signers right now. And hopefully, we can present that to you, too, to just realize when the community realizes what's possible and what can be lost, they will see that's something important. And, you know, there's a lot more to say on it. We are going to be having a community forum tune, and we can hopefully be talking to people and have them express what they'd like to see. The city of Ukiah, with their Great Redwood Trails Linear Park, I don't have the language to read to it, but I can tell you that the community got behind it and the city got behind the community and developed a lot of really great ideas. And there was a lot of input, and it took some time, and there was some volunteerism. And I think we could get a lot of people to volunteer and be involved in this process. I have more to say. I've obviously had another time, but I just wanted to put that out there. And thank you for your--
Flyers for all of you. And staff, too. So that is pretty much, it directs you to the website for the L Street Linear Park. That, so, and then it also, on that website, gives you a lot of information about other linear parks and how it's going to be connected with the Redwood, Great Redwood Trail. That's the 320-mile trail coming from San Francisco up to ending in Blue Lake. This is the corridor for the Redwood Trail. So we're trying to ask the city to go back to their original plan when the trail was proposed. L Street was supposed to be a linear park. So this is a picture from the city of what L Street was supposed to look like. I found this on the internet. It has since disappeared since I brought it up to Transportation Safety Committee and the city council. So on the website, we have the PDF that we saved before it was scrubbed from the internet that show you the whole plan of L Street. I really suggest you look into that. I think Karen Deemer was the one that put a lot of energy and effort into that plan. It was spectacular. We were all rallying for it. It was nice to get the trail in, but the linear park was something that we were really rooting for as well. So I give you that flyer. So you can find that. It's not lost. I also kind of want to go back to what the other woman was saying about our wastewater treatment plant. And I wanted to draw your attention, hopefully, to the time, you read Lori Dangler's article in the Time Standard on the 8th. And she was talking about how sea level rise will be more rapidly, will rise more rapidly in Humboldt County. And the end quote that she has in there, it says, "The implication for Humboldt is enormous. It will require moving wastewater treatment plants and moving and protecting roads and highways. Proposed developments like Arcata's Gateway Project will find themselves in the tsunami hazard zone." So anyways, yeah, she was right when the location for the wastewater treatment plant was there in the Beryl District around the Soil Science area, building area. And I just don't know why we abandoned that. And we're going to have to address this and as, you know, things are coming out with Alderon and Lori indicating that it's going to be a lot more desire, it's a lot more, it's, it's going to be a lot more, it's going to have a more, a larger effect on us than we were originally anticipating. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I just had a, I guess, initial question for Vice Chair Davies. I was going to speak about a request for a quantitative community survey for the Gateway area. Is that part of the future agenda? It's pretty vague, or the upcoming agenda? I can come back later if you think it's, if I should just wait.
Go ahead, Scott.
You want to do that now?
Sure.
Okay. So, yeah, my name is Scott McBane. I'm part of the ad hoc Responsible Growth Arcata Group. As I've stated in previous public comments, we're really strongly supportive of smart growth and innovative infill for the future of Arcata that culminates in a high-quality Gateway Plan that provides affordable housing, jobs, healthy community, all those things. We're not anti-Gateway. I have to keep saying that. Our revised Gateway Plan Advisory Committee recommendations are in your packet. I guess we'll talk about that maybe later on page 31. And we're available for any questions for that section. My comments tonight just focus on revisiting our recommendations that we made to the Planning Commission earlier this year, requesting a quantitative, independent, scientific community survey to better understand community desires for the specifics of the Gateway Plan. So specifically, we're requesting that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council to conduct this community survey in response to their request for the commission to specifically address resources that the commission needs to make recommendations on the Gateway Plan. We feel this is a critical part of it that would inform you. So this Gateway area-specific survey will allow the commission, council, and the public to better understand community opinion on specific details that will inform objective standards, land use code, and other things within the Gateway Plan. And the survey should provide quantitative, independent, objective public opinion on specific issues that have been problematic for the community over the past 10 months when the draft came out. And this community survey would quickly bring clarity on what people want in a quantitative way, improve trust and buy-in on the content of the final Gateway Plan. Despite heroic efforts by the staff, we don't have this quantitative public opinion data for the Gateway area. This type of survey was really helpful for city council to inform the Measure A Parks, Trails, and Open Spaces ballot in November 2020 election. And a Gateway area-specific survey would be very helpful for your deliberations and city councils. The professional public opinion and research firm that performed that survey for Measure A has provided a more detailed proposal for this type of survey for the Gateway Plan. And I've provided that to the city manager, and I can hand that out to you. So you have it in your packet that you can take a look at. And so providing for your consideration now. The proposal that they've authorized me to share with you provides an overview of how they could do this independent survey, the costs and the deliverables. And the survey is relatively inexpensive and can be conducted rapidly in a few weeks. So it shouldn't delay the process, but provide us with that really important information that we really need. So we hope that you can include this independent community survey in your recommendations to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a couple attendees on Zoom who'd like to speak. Go ahead, Craig.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My training is in science, and I want to point out something I haven't heard much about, and that is, the whole Gateway project is slated to be built upon alluvial soil. And so when you talk about high buildings, what happens during an earthquake in alluvial soil, which basically turns to jello, is that the buildings begin to resonate. And the higher the building, the more extreme the resonate quality becomes. And so what might be a little bit of shaking in the ground floor is going to be magnified in the higher floors. And so if these buildings were going to be built on bedrock, like up by Founder's Hall, there'd be no problem. But on jello, I don't, I don't, I don't care if they are seismically engineered. We're going to have a large earthquake, and it's almost guaranteed. They're not going to be standing, you know? They're, whatever the design, whatever. And I've seen proof of that in Japan. They're quite, quite good at building engineered buildings for earthquakes. And I've seen buildings, earthquake buildings, they hold together, but the soil doesn't. So they're slanted after, this was at 7.6. They're slanted at a 25-degree angle by the end of that. And I would not want to be in there with all the office equipment heading down towards me and the whole thing bouncing around during an earthquake. We're 17 years overdue for a major earthquake with the Cascadia Fault. And any multi-story building, you know, I don't know, three-story might be all right, four-story, maybe. But, you know, any, it's just going to get, it's just going to get magnified as the stories go up. So just remember, our earth is king. And we really are learning that we can't do things on this planet that we wish we could. Because, well, we just had two huge hurricanes. So I just want to point out, seismically, it's not a good idea to build multi-story buildings. When our earth starts moving, and it will, people are going to die. And I want to leave it at that.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening, Commissioners. On that really sour kind of note, I want to say it's nice to be here this evening. And I'm sorry I can't be there in person. But to repeat what I said last week, the agenda needs to be very specific as to what is going to be discussed so the public has advance notice. I think it still fails to do that, as it could. The agenda proposes two items related to the plan for discussion this evening. One, building height, and two, resources the commission needs to make recommendations on the Gateway Plan. That would presumably include the RGA proposal to establish topic advisory groups. Presumably, it therefore does not address amenities and community benefits, the revised draft Gateway Plan, or other issues not listed on the agenda. And I received a notice from the city this morning that reads as follows. "An important clarification for the community is that the newly released Gateway Area Plan is an interim version of the plan, revision of the plan, which incorporates committee and public input received as of September 30, 2022, that comports with the draft plan." And I emphasize the word "comports." "Recommendations for changes to the plan that are either in conflict with the draft or that have competing recommendations are included in a table that will be published separately." Well, I think it would be helpful for the commission and the public to know what these recommendations are so they can consider them when making decisions. So I'd like to know when they'll be available and whether there would be any explanation as to why they have been rejected. But I think there should be an opportunity to discuss those before they're just thrown under the table. I appreciated receiving that notification, by the way, this morning. That was very nice. I forwarded it to several people. In addition, I attended Alderon Laird's sea-level presentation on Saturday, and I certainly would recommend that you invite him as a local technical expert, among others, to discuss his findings prior to finalizing building height and locations. You just heard a very significant alternative concern with respect to earthquake and soil consistency, where it liquefies. It's not that there aren't places, possibly even in the Gateway District, where the foundation is better, where there might be a little granite or something under there, that we could rely on building higher. But that's why we're promoting that you have topical experts come in to talk to you. I think you should invite Alderon Laird to come and speak with you, among others, so that you understand what is viable and not going to wipe people out in this area and not wipe out our infrastructure.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Go ahead, Chris.
Hello, Chris Richards here. Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks again for showing up and doing what you guys do. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Vice Chair Davies, for allowing folks to speak on topics that are, it's become a real issue, as a couple of other speakers have talked about, that we're having these agenda packets come out. And the whole idea of an agenda packet being a gateway-specific item leaves, leaves it so wide and so varied for people trying to speak at this segment that it, it's a problem. I mean, we need to get back on track with specific agenda topics and what part of what elements we're dealing with on each meetings and all of that stuff. And-- elements we're dealing with on each meetings and all of that stuff. Anyway, I won't want to get too far off on that. I wanted to speak and bring up the remaining problem with the Gateway Area Plan as an element of the general plan. I mean, we haven't been talking much about the general plan because we've been diving off into this other direction for a while, but there's still the issue of it being embedded as an element inside the general plan, the Gateway Area Plan being embedded as an element. And we're looking at an election coming up. We may end up with more recusal folks. And the issue of folks being able to vote on the general plan with the Gateway Area Plan being embedded as an element is going to become more of a problem as we move forward. We've talked about this before. I have recommended that we remove the Gateway Area Plan as an element and get this general plan taken care of and then move, this Gateway Area Plan is going to continue to be a long-term planning development issue. And I think we're missing the boat on getting our general plan together and then working towards the Gateway Area Plan. But anyway, I don't want to take any more time on some of the topics that other people have spoken on because they covered it really well. But thank you again for your time and also your patience to listen to people speak and give their views. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I want to start today by saying thank you to everyone who's discussing city planning, not only here, but with people, other residents in the public. And just that there is some momentum building and getting involved with the development of the city. I want to mention the L Street Rails with Trail Corridor is a Linear Park community forum to support. It's going to happen on Monday, October 17, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., and that's a great opportunity to come and connect with the community and discuss the Linear Park idea, which I think is fantastic and much better than the idea of almost kind of having like a Broadway to US 101-style truck corridor where that currently is. And then I want to cross over into saying, to the Planning Commission's credit, I think you guys deliberated and explained your process really well last time in making a decision about the project down there near Lyons. And I also wanted to mention that the City Council, with the two contractors last week, one out of the area, one local, I would have liked it if they explained their decision-making. That was kind of a little bit disappointing. And then also another thing that is a bit off-topic, but the same day that the article about the county getting sued for its abatement program, the City of Arcata posted on their Facebook page that they would abate homes that have litter or weeds in their front sidewalk. And I felt like that was not only a really bad look for the City of Arcata, but really not okay to be posting something like that on Facebook. It's something that people should discuss and be a part of that discussion, not just shout it at us like an order from a big social media platform. And then, you know, beyond that, I really do feel positive about being from somewhere that engages city planning. And I think that it's the best thing we could teach Cal Poly students who come here, how to think locally and act locally and just be, you know, even thinking globally on some level, the way that we are using intelligent-based decision-making and working with the community is what I want to support. And I see some of that in areas, and sometimes I don't see it. And so I just want to keep the momentum going in the right direction. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Lindsay.
Hi, my name's Lindsay, and I wanted to kind of take a minute to piggyback off of what Scott was saying. I just feel like the absence of a quantitative, of any quantitative information on what the community wants in the future for the Gateway Area Plan is kind of problematic. I just wanted to say that I really encourage the Planning Commission to request that a quantitative statistical community survey be conducted to understand what the community wants for the future of the Gateway Area Plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bee.
Hello.
Hi, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, so my Zoom app wasn't working on my smartphone, so I had to drive home and get on my laptop. So I'm not sure what I missed. But from Janet Woodward, I believe her name, all the way to Lindsay, the last speaker, I agree wholeheartedly with everything that they said. And I personally feel like I am someone that tries to be informed, and I feel like the public outreach to the Arcata community has not been broad enough or frequent enough for people to really get involved. Anytime I'm in a social situation and the topic comes up, people are very uninformed about what's happening and the speed at which it is happening. My husband has a business, I guess that's south of K Street or west of K Street. I get confused by the bay, but I think that the prospect of losing commercial businesses in Arcata is not a good idea. And I don't know where commercial businesses are supposed to go. If they're currently headquartered in Arcata, my understanding is that they would be grandfathered in, but in the future, if that business owner is sold, then it would no longer be a commercial business. I object to so many aspects of the Gateway Plan, including the capacity for sewage treatment at the marsh. And I am absolutely opposed to eight-story tall buildings. I feel like there should be a four-story maximum. When I look at the four-story buildings in Arcata, they're all blocking out sunlight, and they're rather large. And, you know, I hope that, I would really like to see, I'm not really sure what the process is because I'm having a hard time keeping up on it all, but I really think that there just needs to be way more community input, maybe even like an election, a special election, where people, you know, are asked if they support the plan. And, you know, if they do, then it moves forward. But, you know, I've lived here since 1976, and I like the character of Arcata. I would like to maintain that character, and I feel like putting super dense housing and expecting those people to not use their vehicles and creating, you know, these eyesores is just really not what this community needs. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no other public speakers, Vice Chair, and I've been asked by the IT to give us a five-minute break. They're having some issues with streaming, so if you'd be willing.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll adjourn for a five-minute break and...
Okay, we are back. Thank you, everybody. We are back. We will now move on to item three this evening, which is the consent calendar. We have one consent calendar item this evening, and that is to approve the Planning Commission minutes from our September 27 regular meeting.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. And at this point in the meeting, we're going to move on to business items. Our main business item on the agenda this evening is the Gateway Area Plan. And however, before we get a staff report, I wanted to take an opportunity to talk briefly about the RGA proposal, which is something that we've discussed at many prior meetings. We do have in our packet this evening a further iteration of the RGA proposals for how this kind of a process could work. And I want to note a couple of things. One is that much of the mapping exercise that we're going to do this evening is going to allow us to dig in specifically to the list of issues that the RGA solutions propose to help us work on. So there will be some more discussion about it in our Gateway discussion this evening. But the place I wanted to emphasize, because I think we could kind of dispense with this, is that I noticed that the hybrid option of two and three, as proposed by RGA, maps very strongly over a proposal that I made the last time we talked about this RGA, which is along the lines of their proposal. What I think what I said specifically was that we would have individual specialists that would come and talk to us on issues that we feel like we need more help with and that we could also, further down the road in this process, for either, for issues for whatever reason, that we may want to utilize the topic working group. Given that I feel like there's, you know, from my perspective, we're largely in alignment, I just wanted to see if there was anyone on the Planning Commission that would be willing to make a motion that we pursue that pathway. And then at least we'll have an agreement about how we're going to approach this RGA proposal, and we could then move on to discussing the Gateway issue this evening.
So I'd like to see if we could hear from the Planning Commissioners that are here before we do that, just to explore if there were other ideas.
And Scott, for clarification, was it option four, the hybrid of two and three that you were...
Yeah, in prior iterations, it was called option four. This evening's packet has it just listed as a hybrid option of two and three. And again, I think that that maps really strongly over the proposal I made, that we utilize individual specialists where the Planning Commission feels that's important, and also incorporate topic working groups at some point further in the process for issues that we decide a topic working group would be appropriate. And again, given the fact that there's, at least from my perspective, a lot of correlation between their proposal and my proposal, I wanted to see if there was anyone else that felt, you know, in agreement with that so that we could perhaps get a motion and move on to discussing other issues.
I'm all for, particularly the hybrid model that I see here. And we clearly need individual specialists. There's, that's come up. It's, we're heading that direction, it feels. The working group idea needs a lot more clarity, like, and, you know, this is what I'd like to discuss, is what does it look like? Who picks that working group? Are they vetted through us? Are they vetted through the staff? I don't know. And exactly how do we get that group chosen in a timely manner? And then what are the exact questions that those groups would take on? And that's something that I guess we'll also have to discuss, and how do we vet those questions so that there's very specific assignments?
Yeah, well, I think a couple of things. One is I think if we can get a motion that this is how we're going to approach it, then we would bring this back as an item to specifically talk about how we would incorporate working groups. But I think the mapping exercise we're going to do later this evening is going to give us a lot more information about what issues that are on the list of questions that we have, as well as the community, might need either an individual specialist or a working group. I think we'll have more clarity at the other end of the exercise we're going to do this evening. But my hope would be that if we could at least say, yes, we like this option, then we could bring it back to flesh out some of the details at a later date. then we could bring it back to flesh out some of the details at a later date. Judith?
Yeah, one thing that I'm not at all clear about, and that we would need to discuss, is what would the working groups work on, and what would their relationship to the planning commission itself be? I'm, I'm especially concerned about quasi-public, quasi-ad hoc efforts that would tie the planning commission into advice or de facto decisions that are made beyond the scope of the Brown Act. And if it is material that would be subject to the Brown Act, that's going to require city staff, and therefore, resources that we, that are right now quite beyond the scope of what it appears we would have relatively rapid access to. I think that there's an enormous potential for members of the public, organizations of members of the public, to organize, to provide advice as detailed as, as they want to, and to ask the city to provide them with the expertise that they may, may need to then provide us with that advice. But I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about a hybrid of public accountable process and ad hoc processes that would potentially lead us into not only conflicts of interest, but in effect, a long way toward decisions made behind closed doors off the record. One of the things that I really value about the planning commission process is that it is all on the record. It is all public. Even if you don't like the broadness of the agenda items, we don't talk to each other behind anyone's back. We're not allowed to. And I'm sure if we, if we could, we would very efficiently be able to mobilize lots of advice from a lot of people and bring it into this room. So I, I am not super excited about voting on the RGA hybrid option at this time, because I don't know what it would look like. And there's some versions of what it would look like that, to me, would fly in the face of what I want the planning commission to be involved with.
So I was wanting to know if we could put that off till we have, because we're missing two of our planning commissioners, our chair and John?
If I could make a process suggestion?
Please.
Because I think that the, the exercise that we have planned for tonight will flesh out a lot of the issues that were raised. In fact, you know, part of what we're trying to do tonight is to identify, you know, concerns that have been raised by the public. And so, you know, we were, you know, we took all of the items that were on that list and included them. So you have an opportunity to talk about them specifically, you know, in that context. And so maybe, you know, coming back at the end of this meeting and thinking through that again, what, what that looks like after you've run through that exercise and decided, well, does this issue, you know, seem like it needs a working group? Or does this issue need, you know, more information from a specialist, so on and so forth? The other thing I wanted to mention was, I, I think that, you know, the, the opportunities for solution sets in today's exercise to address the concerns that we are, you know, the, the community and the, the planning commissioner raising, we should, we should evaluate all of them. There, there may be some solution sets that, some, some recommendations for solutions that are, you know, too expensive or outside our capacity to, to do. But I think it's fine to have them on the table to consider. And then that way, we can make the decision, again, in public, a transparent decision as to whether or not that's, you know, a study that we can do, or that's an expert that we can bring, or, you know, if it violates the Brown Act. And I do see that the, the planning commission is being in the driver's seat of those particular decisions when they arise, how the, the, you know, subcommittees are formed, and how they're used, and how that information is brought back into the public discourse.
At, at some point in this evening's meeting, I wouldn't mind hearing from whoever would represent the RGA group in describing what they have in mind in this hybrid option. What I've got here is one piece of paper. And I would like to hear from the folks who put that piece of paper together, what they actually have in mind in proposing it to us, or whatever else they feel that we should put into our decision process as suggestions, so that we, we can think those things through and evaluate them.
Well, I, I think if we're not at a point where we could make a motion regarding this proposal, my preference would be that we move into the mapping exercise, because again, it's going to give us a lot more detail about which issues may need a working group, or specialists, or that alternatively, we feel comfortable with as is. So Christian, we haven't heard from you. Do you, what's your take on the status of the RGA proposal, and whether, whether we're ready to make a decision about it, or you'd like to hear more information in our discussion this evening?
I would like to hear more information from our discussion this evening, and go forward with this, mapping out the concerns that have been brought to the commission in the RGA proposal, and also items that are of concern to my fellow commissioners, and anything that may come up this evening in public comment.
Okay, so given that, let's, sure?
I would like, I agree with Judith that I would like to hear at least an abbreviated presentation. I know that they've put a lot of time in it, and I feel like we should at least give the due diligence of hearing at least part of it. And I also love the idea of what David said of doing this mapping, and then maybe having some presentation, and then waiting till we actually have a full planning commission. We're missing our chair and John. Both of them have an incredible amount of experience and expertise, and I feel like their voices would be very important to be heard.
Okay, so given that, then let's hit the pause button on the RGA proposal and move into a staff report about our gateway area discussion and mapping exercise this evening.
Yeah, and just, just before we begin that, I guess, you know, I've heard a couple of ideas put on the table about not making decisions tonight. And so I want to check in with the planning commission and see if that's where you're at. The intent for tonight's meeting is really about making some concrete decisions. And so if you feel like you need to have the full membership before you're ready to do that, that's really going to change the way we approach tonight's meeting. I don't think this exercise is worth doing twice. It's going to be, you know, you know, some, you know, significant investment in work and, and thinking and process. And we've assembled our team here tonight. We've got, you know, the entire community development planning team, Joe Matier, senior planner, De La Frede, senior planner, Jennifer Dart, our community development deputy director, Natricotry for engineering is here. We've got Ben Noble, you know, on for our Form-Based team. And we've assembled all these people here tonight to help you work through, you know, decision trees, so that you can come out on the other side with a recommendation to the city council. You do have a quorum. You have more than a quorum. You are able to make decisions tonight if you choose to. But if the majority of you feel like you're just not going to be able to do that, I think we'd like to know that. Now, I'm going to ask my staff to leave the table, so we can cut to, you know, another, we'll, we'll do something other than the mind mapping.
My position on that is that the, the public is here. We're all here. I would prefer that Julie and John were here, but I don't see a reason to not make decisions tonight in their absence. We do have more than a quorum, and my vote would be to carry on with this exercise.
So I didn't see that we were going to do that on the agenda. There wasn't anything specific, so I guess I'm a little bit confused. I, I don't want you to have to do this twice. I feel like with the time we have, it's very likely that we're going to not have time to get to the very end anyway. I didn't realize that this... I, I guess what I'm just saying is that we can still do all of this without having you to do it twice, and we can still hear the presentation. We can still come and do some decision. But I still would like to have the other two commissioners weigh in, and it doesn't need to be, like, redone. I mean, they can watch it on YouTube and catch up, and then by our next meeting, we're all on the same page.
That would mean not making a decision tonight specifically?
I thought we had other decisions to make also? Is that the only decision that we had on the table tonight?
Tonight, what we're hoping to do is get through a whole list of issues in the Gateway Project, and all the concerns that commissioners and the public have. The staff is ready with a staff report. There's a lot of community members here. My position is we should carry on with this, even as a group minus two. And if we have to leave off in this process and continue, then we hope they're back with us if we need to do so. But I think that this evening's exercise will not be a ton of discussion. It's going to be, do we feel comfortable with this, or do we feel like we need more information? And we can get, map out a clear pathway for getting decisions made on some of these items that we've talked about really over a lot of meetings. And I, and I don't, my vote is definitely not to have to put that off this evening absent two commissioners.
I totally agree.
Judith?
Because all of these decisions are in fact interim discussions, I think we should go ahead, recognizing that until we have a formal recommendation to the council on the plan as a whole, it's, it's all basically interim. And I would hope that the commissioners who are absent, if they have significant disagreements with anything that goes on here tonight, that they will bring those to the next meeting they attend, or correspond with us through staff in the interim.
Great, thank you, Judith. Christian, are you in agreement that we want to move forward with this? You comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with it. Let's do it.
Okay, let's move to the staff report. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that process clarification.
Okay, so I am going to start out before turning it over to David, just to try and set some objectives and framework for tonight. I think we all pretty much understand what we're going to be up to, but it is going to be a pretty dynamic meeting. And so I wanted to just provide a little bit of information before we get started. And David, can you go to the next slide, please? So one of our members of the public here tonight mentioned that the draft plan, the revised draft plan, that's up on the website, is different than what is in your packet. This is specifically what is different. There is the that we added after the release of the draft, when it went out with your packet last week. And so this, essentially paraphrasing what this says here, is that this is an updated interim plan. It is far from being the final version. But this mostly reflects the committee's recommendations to date, and also public input received through the end of September that comports with the draft plan. And the release of this interim was a commitment that we made to the planning commission at the city council at our August 23 special study session, which was really to show the work that we've been doing for several months now, focusing on different policy chapters with a variety of committees. And they've put a lot of work into this. And people were also calling for this work to be shared with the planning commission and the public in a comprehensive version. And even though, you know, it definitely might seem like it's moving fast, this is a pretty exciting turning point in the preparation of this document, because it is the first time that modifications have been published since the draft was released in December of last year. So it's been about a year. And this is the first time that we have released an updated document. And there are definitely still some important policy questions to sort out with this body before it goes to the city council. But this draft does reflect dozens and dozens of hours with committee volunteers who bring a wide array of expertise, and also many members of the public who are here with us tonight, who have been here with us for dozens and dozens of these meetings. And so recommendations for changes to the plan, as we've heard tonight, that are either in conflict with the draft, or represent somewhat competing recommendations, are included in a table that will be published separately. And we're hoping by the next meeting, if not sooner, to get that out. And as you can probably expect, the two most significant areas that still need to be decided by the planning commission, where we are seeing a lot of diverse opinion, is building height, which we've been talking about at the commission for the last few meetings, as well as the conversion of L Street. So these are hopefully going to continue to be a focus of the next few scheduled public hearings. And that's partially the intent of our mind mapping tonight, is to get some of these things sorted out, and really focus in on what materials are needed for this commission to begin to formulate that formal recommendation to the city council. And so our goal at this point is to really focus in on recommendations from the planning commission, and make those additional modifications to the draft that the public wants to see to prepare for another round of city council review. And we're really excited to work with you on getting that work done. And so tonight, we're going to work pretty systematically, hopefully, to hold a series of targeted discussions on what the draft still needs, in order to prepare us as staff for next modifications to the Gateway Area Plan, the preparation of our Form-Based Code, and community engagement more broadly. And this is particularly important, as has been mentioned, because your guidance will allow us to go to the city council and request any additional budget that we need, to bring in whatever support we need to move this work forward. And I do have, you know, some dates of upcoming meetings that I wanted to share, but I wanted to just turn it to Jen and David. Do you have any other sort of disclaimer clarifications that you want to make? No? Okay. Okay, great. Next slide. Perfect. So before we had this hearing, we were considering, you know, where do we want to go? What support can we bring to the commission before the end of the year? And this is absolutely not to say that we will not be working into 2023. We absolutely will. There are still a lot of things that need to be sorted out, both for the Gateway Plan and the Form-Based Code, but also the general plan more broadly. But tonight is October 11. We have one more meeting in October, two in November, two in December, and then that is the end of 2022, and we'll be on to 2023. And so I have some kind of animations, David, if you want to maybe just click through those. So as we continue to work on, with, working with the planning commission on the Gateway Plan, we also want to begin to shift our conversations towards the Form-Based Code, hold some of those additional workshops that we've been talking about with Ben Noble, who's here tonight, if you have questions for him. We also have discussed the potential to maybe integrate some of his work into planning commission hearings, if the planning commission would like to be more on the ground for that work. Our hope is to have two of the three planned workshops before the end of the year, if that seems to be timely. And that's on packet page 10, where it outlines the three workshops and the content for those that we have so far. The third workshop is specific to community amenities, and it may make sense to have some targeted and facilitated planning commission discussions on the community benefits and community amenities, as well as any other areas, policy areas, that the planning commission wants to focus on before the end of the year. And we'll really be looking to this body to guide what other policy modifications you want to make, and how you want to do that. But the intent is to work either with staff to facilitate, or ideally with our professional facilitation team, to really dig into those community benefits, as has been requested by the commission. And that's part of our next step. So that final workshop for Form-Based Code could happen in early 2023. And if we need to continue to have facilitated sessions, depending on where we're at with Form-Based Code and community amenities, obviously, we can continue to do that. Next slide, please. So these targeted facilitated sessions, these, again, would mostly So these targeted facilitated sessions, these again would mostly focus on community benefits and community amenities, assuming that that will take a fair amount of time for the Planning Commission to get through and tie that into wherever we land with height and the number of, you know, benefit tiers associated with that height. And one other thing to note is that on your next agenda for the October 25 meeting, we're hoping to basically poll commissioners on whether or not the meetings that fall close to the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays maybe should be rescheduled. And so please, you know, consider that as well and come prepared with maybe some dates that would work for you. We are hoping to reschedule and not cancel those meetings because there is a lot of work to do. So I guess a final note would be we are hoping to both work on community amenities and other elements, other chapters of the Gateway Plan, sort of in tandem with working to do additional community engagement on the Form-Based Code and try and get into those details that the commission has been asking for and kind of do those things in tandem. But again, we're always open to other ideas and are here to support the commission as we move forward. And I think that is everything that I wanted to say sort of at the beginning of this meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dila. Okay, so I'm going to transition into describing what we're going to attempt to do tonight. There's a lot of moving parts, so I guess before we get started, I do just want to ask that, you know, we all, you know, have a little patience and we'll work through the issues together. Part of the reason we have the whole team here is because there are a lot of different elements that need to work simultaneously to pull this off. And so we're going to be, you know, kind of hoping to do that seamlessly, but recognizing that there may just be, you know, some elements that we need to have some patience on. So thank you in advance for that. Okay, so the purpose of tonight's meeting is to work through an exercise where we'll be able to identify all of the concerns that we have around this and that the Planning Commission will be able to select amongst those concerns. Could be all of them. It could be a few subset of them that you want to then continue to work through solutions for, resolutions to. The process is going to have a, you know, public participation component to it that we'll explain. And we've reserved some time at the very end for some public comment. But the public will be able to participate all the way through, as you'll see. Again, the objectives, and we'll go through these in a little bit more detail in a minute, are to provide a set of recommendations to the City Council about what the Planning Commission feels it needs to accomplish this work. Okay, so first, I want to note that the concerns that the community has, the concerns the Planning Commission has, are going to be tied to the maximum building height. And so we're going to ask you to first start by establishing the max building height and/or, you know, targeted elevation. As you described last time, that these two things are interconnected. You want to make sure that you discuss both. That will help you establish what the set of concerns are and in turn the resolutions to those concerns. We are going to, through this process, start to identify the community amenities, but those are going to be, need to be tied to the maximum building heights again. These projects, in order to be feasible, will have to have community benefit programs that are commensurate with the revenues that those buildings will generate. Otherwise, we won't have any buildings generated. We're also going to start to identify, you know, components of the Form-Based Code standards that would make these maximum building heights possible. And finally, we'll identify information that you'll need to finalize these decisions. And so we see these as kind of the various subsets or the buckets of information that you'll be digesting tonight that will lead you into follow-up discussions. There's no way that you're going to get into very detailed discussions around amenities and benefits, the Form-Based Code standards that you'd like to see, or additional information, whether that be through, you know, additional studies, hearing experts come and talk to you, or, you know, having subcommittees of the Planning Commission to get into that information in more detail. So those, we'll start to thumbnail sketch what we're looking for, but we're not going to get into any depth tonight about those. And so here's a list of things that have been discussed before, you know, statistical surveys, subcommittees, new studies. All of those things can come out of tonight's discussion. We'll be tracking those. So just to kind of give a visual overview of the process and also to give the commission an opportunity to ask questions about this process, which is detailed in the staff report, we've also, you know, had several conversations leading up to this with some of you as well. So the process, we're going to start by setting the building height maximum by district. You had your conversations in the last meeting on September 27 about these. There were a couple of ideas that were floated. So we're going to ask that you start by setting that building height threshold to work through the specific concerns that are tied to those. Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, at one of our previous meetings, there was some discussion about modifying those district boundaries. I know Commissioner Chair Viset Elkhag made some suggestions. I made a strong suggestion that no districts straddle the coastal zone boundary. And the material that you provided us in our packet today with regard to the rationale for the approach to the plan that you gave really confirmed that not straddling that coastal zone boundary for any policy that would result in the need to consider them separately within the coastal zone is a good idea. So I'm wondering how we're going to take the local coastal program and the coastal zone boundary into account in this exercise.
Yeah, I think the, you know, that sounds like a concern to me, so we'll put it on the list, and then the commission can work through, you know, how to address that. So the first piece, once you've set that building height, is to identify the concerns related to those. The Planning Commission is going to be ultimately making the decisions about what concerns that you go on to further address. And the public is going to have direct access to this process through SLIDO. Now, I know you've heard some people that are concerned about the validity of SLIDO polling in terms of its ability to, you know, convey statistically valid conclusions. I just want to put, you know, be real clear before we get into the further process that that is not the purpose of SLIDO tonight. The purpose of SLIDO, the way that we're using it tonight, is to make sure that we have a complete list. And so it doesn't matter how many times a particular item gets upvoted, if you will. We're not going to look at that upvoting of that particular item and say, see, most people are concerned about this. It's not the purpose of tonight's meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is airing all of the issues. And so SLIDO is a really good tool for us to be able to give the public real-time access to your decision-making. We're going to have SLIDO up. We're going to have the list up, and we'll be taking that information on simultaneously. Regardless of what the concern is, it could be a concern that's completely unrelated, that the Planning Commission ultimately feels like is completely disconnected from this decision-making process. And you may not wish to consider that concern further in your deliberations. It's going to show up on the list so that you can make that decision here in real time. We're then going to look to identify solutions or resolutions to those concerns. We're going to have a list of items that we, you know, already have studies for or we're already planning to have studies for. You know, a good example of this is the Form-Based Code, where the Form-Based Code, we have a scope of work, but we've heard from the community and from some commissioners that we'd like to see that scope of work expanded. We actually included both the scope of work and a proposal for an expanded scope of work in your packet tonight. So that's an area where you can, you've identified a concern. Public has identified a concern. You've said, we want more engagement with the Form-Based Code. We'd like to have a better Form-Based Code than what's currently scoped. If that's ultimately your conclusion, you can make a recommendation through the solution set. And again, the public will be able to help us populate those solution sets. The Planning Commission is going to make ultimately the decisions which solution sets that you choose to pursue. An example I've been using to illustrate this is, you know, if someone comes forward and says, hey, we'd like you to work with the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change to develop your sea level rise policy. Well, I think we would all acknowledge that that's a really, you know, robust way of approaching this. It's also outside of our scope and ability to do so. That is going to show up on the list. It's a really good idea. The Planning Commission is going to be in the driver's seat in terms of saying, we want to include this in our final solution set. Ultimately, the Planning Commission will then go through the process of evaluating those solutions. There's a lot to get through tonight. We recognize that, want to be conscious of that. If we don't get through it all, that is fine. We can continue the exercise. But our objective would be to get through all of the concerns, all of the solution sets, and to have at least started evaluating those solutions, saying, these are the kinds of issues that we'd like to see come back to us. Now, we've included, I said at the beginning, we've included, I believe, all of the concerns raised by Arcata, Responsible Growth Arcata, for example. And so the Planning Commission could evaluate, you know, do we feel like we need to see a study on that? Or do we feel like we need to have a working group on that? And you can put that into the solution set tonight. If we haven't fully captured that, folks will be able to participate via SLIDO. So again, we're going to have the SLIDO available for folks. I'm going to show that in a moment. If you have your devices or if you're zooming in from home, if you're watching on YouTube, you can join the SLIDO process and participate. If you do not have a device tonight, we also have some papers and pens, I believe, on that back corner. And if you want to write your concerns down on those Post-it notes and then bring them up to staff, we'll add them to the list as well. Okay, so the outcomes, again, just to reiterate, list of concerns, a list of resolutions, and then ultimately the Planning Commission recommendation. We anticipate these will fall into these kind of categories of either it's an existing study or one that we're proposing within the existing scope. It's a new study that we need to evaluate whether we have the ability to commission. There's some expert opinion you'd like to hear from. You know, one of the things that I've heard frequently is we'd like to hear from Arcata volunteer, I'm sorry, the Arcata Fire Department. I've spoken with the chief, and he's willing to come and speak with you. So there's an example of, you know, expert opinion that you can hear from. The committee working group or new work product, for example, the additional Form-Based Code. Those are the outcomes we're anticipating. The process is, here's a snapshot or a screenshot of the spreadsheet that we'll be using to track the list of concerns and solution sets. This, not expecting you to be able to read this, but I just want to give you a hint as to what we'll be using, and we'll be organizing your thoughts into this spreadsheet so that we have a record of those decisions. Okay, and so just once to, you know, reinforce this idea, what we're going to get out of this is a starting point for these benefits codes and resources. You're not going to have substantive discussions. Those will be follow-ups to this meeting. A description of, that we can use to start the EIR process and to do additional code engagement. And then finality on the commission, items the commission does not need to explore in more detail. So if there's a list of items, you've heard, I've, you know, heard enough about this. I feel like we have plenty in the record. We, as a commission, now feel like we can move on from this, and we're going to take that information as it comes. Then we can note that as well. And then the flip side of that as well, also obviously issues that you do want to consider further. Again, this is just the inverse, what we're not going to get. We are not going to get a comprehensive list of community benefits. We're going to need additional time and more meetings to come back and evaluate those. I know that the commission, the public are very interested in having those conversations, and so we can only have so much discussion at one time. Comprehensive list, Form-Based Code standards, we're not getting, and a list of additional resources. You can continue to add these on. Okay, so finally, here's the QR code if you're at home, or if you can, you know, pick that from your phone. This is how you can QR code into the SLIDO, or if you go to slido.com. And when asked at that location to enter the meeting ID, it's PC1011, Planning Commission, October 11th. So we'll give a moment for folks to open up that SLIDO. Okay, now I'm going to transition away from the PowerPoint. Are there questions about the process?
Yeah, are we expected to do SLIDO on our phones up here?
You do not. The Planning Commission is going to basically vote by hand. There's no PC SLIDO link. Okay, so... Organize this information here. Okay. We're pulling up the SLIDO. So again, public does have the ability to upvote these if you wish. We're going to go through this list once just so you can see what's on here. And these are also, if you're on SLIDO, you can scroll through them yourself. We've added everything that's on the list and the Excel spreadsheet to the SLIDO. And so you can add new concerns via SLIDO if you feel like we haven't covered something, or you can, if you wish to, upvote. But again, your upvote doesn't mean that, you know, it's telling us that you think that too, but we're not using that information to indicate popularity or importance at this point. Okay, so with that...
After we get this initial list, are we going to be ready then, as a commission, to discuss what building height proposal we're going to use as a starting point for this mapping and analysis?
Yes, actually, thank you for that, Vice Chair. That's probably the first thing to do so that you can know whether or not these map on to those...
Right.
Your concerns. So thank you for that.
So given that, just to reiterate that we're not going to try and solve all these issues this evening, but that in order to go through a process where we identify concerns and solutions, we have to pick a starting point in the form of a recommended building height. So given that, at our, the last time we discussed this, I, there is, for example, the plan as it is in the draft, which is the, you know, draft that was released by the city, eight stories, et cetera. I made a proposal that dropped that down and was a 7-6-5-4 tiered proposal. Judith made a, I think, which was a 6-6?4 proposal. And then John made a cap at four stories across-the-board proposal. So given the fact that we need to pick a spot to begin the exercise this evening, does anyone have a motion or a recommendation? Want to pick one of the proposals that's already been on the table as a starting point for this evening's exercise?
Well, I'll jump in and support the 7-6-5-4 proposal.
Okay, now is this going to be a first and then a second in the form of a motion, or we just do a vote?
You could formalize it like that if you wanted to, or you could do the straw poll, either one. It, you know, has the same effect. To Commissioner Mayor's point, these are sort of interim decisions.
Of course.
This will allow us to go through this process with an idea in mind of how significant the issues are relative to, you know, the building heights that you're considering.
So you're making a motion. Does anyone have a second to that motion?
Could I recommend that we not use a motion second process for this relatively informal exercise here? I think it's quite confusing to the public. These are not formal motions that our body is taking that will result in recorded actions specifically. So I suggest that we don't use that format if possible.
So perhaps just a back and forth until we try to get to something we agree on, right? Or even if we have to go in between something, but we do need something.
We need something.
So that we can move forward on to the next part of the exercise.
So perhaps a majority vote then of present commissioners?
That works, too.
So I will certainly vote for the proposal that I made, that Dan has voted for. Christian, can you weigh in on this?
I will, I will follow the votes of you two. I will propose, yeah, I'll follow the 7-6-5-4. Yep.
So that's... Judith?
No.
Kim?
No.
So that's still a majority? Staff have a recommendation about how to move forward, given that?
Yeah, I do, actually. I think that, you know, certainly, again, had this been a formal vote, that would obviously be an action that passed. You may struggle to find a proposal that everyone is willing to move forward with. You know, the motion process would allow for a counter motion. So if you want to try and, you know, build more consensus, you can... So if you want to try and, you know, build more consensus, you can give it another crack. Again, I guess the way that I would look at this is that, you know, you're actually, this is not just an exercise, you know, for the fun of it. You're actually doing work that's leading to a recommendation to the city council. And so, you know, the efforts that you put in related to the building heights that are, you know, connected to these concerns, should by the end of this process result in a majority, a majority of you wishing to move forward with that proposal, recognizing these concerns, identifying solutions, and coming up with a recommendation, recommendation for the, to the council for how to move forward.
I mean, I think it's a certainty that we're not going to get unanimous, given the discussions we've had in the past, unless something dramatic changes in the expressed view of the commissioners here and not here. So, it seems to me like we have to fall some way on a majority.
Yeah, what, how about Scott, if we just hear briefly, like, what's the dissenting opinion here, and maybe it starts to nudge the ball back and forth a little bit, just so we can flesh this out?
That sounds good. Kim, do you want to talk about what your issues are with the seven, six, five, four, and what perhaps an alternative view you'd like to propose is?
I don't want to be the dissenter all the time, so I'm just going to step back and let you guys hash it out, and I will go along with whoever the majority is, or some kind of consensus.
Judith, did you want to expand on your view on the proposals, or where you're at with that?
Yeah, I, I don't see a whole lot of difference between a maximum number of stories at seven versus eight. Either one of those, I think, is too high, especially if we're looking at that combined with potentially very large bulky buildings. And of course, we haven't addressed the design issues yet in this discussion. I don't know that they can really be considered separately. So, when you consider that a very tall building could also be very broad, and we don't know what the recommendations are yet at this point, you come up with buildings that are just too big for both the soils and the area where they're being proposed at likely reasonable cost, and for the character of the community, as well as for the views that those very high, potentially very bulky buildings would block.
Got it. I, I understand those concerns. Does it change the fact, though, that specifically this evening, we're going to look at the concerns you listed and name the process by which we could resolve those, or get a process by which we could resolve those? Does that make you feel any more comfortable with at least choosing a starting point, so that we can go through the exercise?
No, it doesn't. I've already gone through that exercise in my own mind, and I'm, I'm satisfied that by avoiding seven and eight-story buildings, that would be a great starting point to discuss those other issues.
Okay, well, given the fact that Kim is going to vote for the majority, I, I count that as four to one this evening, and am going to propose that we use that seven, six, five, four building height as a least starting point for our discussion.
So, I guess I was a little bit confused. I guess I would like to... I, go ahead.
Just remember that all this is, is an interim discussion, and it just nudges the conversation. And listing concerns, as Judith just outlined, is exactly what the next step is. So if its view, if its earthquake, if sea level rise, those will all get put onto this list and registered. It doesn't mean you have to support seven stories or any of this, but we're just trying to flesh out, get to the next steps.
We can't talk about the things that we're all concerned about unless we pick a point at which to begin the conversation, which is what we're trying to do right now.
And so I guess I'm still back at, with regards to, we haven't redistrict, we don't know, I mean, it's so broad, but I guess if it's a starting point, we can start.
Right. I mean, we, our conversations have been kind of circular and not really progressing. And I think this exercise will help bring up the concerns. That's what it's specifically built to do, and then give us specific ways that we can address those concerns. And, and I'm hopeful that that exercise will, you know, be helpful for us, as well as community.
And keeping in mind that if we don't all, at some point, feel comfortable with this, with how they've been addressed, like, oh my gosh, you know, we, we hire a specialist, we, you know, set up a working group or whatever, and we conclude that liquefaction is going to toast these things, or whatever, you know, then we come back, because this is just intro.
But if we don't start somewhere, we won't get to the point of having the working group, a further discussion, expert analysis. Does everyone feel comfortable with that? Christian, are you on board with us?
Yeah, we need something to analyze, guys. We need to put something on paper. And until we put something on paper, you know, the whole point of the analysis is to have a starting point. And, you know, we can't make assumptions based on information that we don't have, nor having the technical expertise present or participating. We just need to put something down. So if we don't put something down, this is just circular and, and just a waste of time.
Judith?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm realizing that so far I appear to be in a minority here, and as a process of what the commission is willing to address as a starting point, I think it would be important to actually go on record that no one on the commission wishes to start the analysis with eight-story buildings. Is that something that we can do first?
I mean, I think by agreeing that we want to start at seven, it basically says we don't want to start at eight.
Let's just say that, then.
Okay, well, my proposal is that we don't start at eight, but that we start at seven and drop incrementally down from six to five to four.
I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
Kim?
Yes.
Better?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to start to walk through what we've seen. So on, on the right-hand side, we have the Slido, the live Slido as it's going, excuse me. We'll do our best to track these as they come up. The, the issues pop around a little bit, but what we've done is, anywhere where you see the yellow W, that's what we believe we've heard from the public, and so we tried to populate those, and you'll see that, you know, some people are upvoting those. And then anywhere there's either, you know, anonymous, or somebody else has added one, they've clicked this add button. So if you're out there in the, the world, and you want to add something, you can click add, and then you can put your item on there. And again, our intent is to populate this side with everything that we've, you know, already populated, and then everything that we're seeing pop up in addition to. And so the first objective will be for the planning commission to go through this list, and to, to walk through, you know, items that you want to continue to talk about. What I've done here is I've hid the solution sets. For some reason, some of them aren't hiding, but I'm going to hide the solution sets, so we can focus on the concerns to start. And so you'll see a couple of solutions in here, like these here. I don't know why they're not disappearing, but they aren't. And so, you know, our first objective is to go through these and say, you know, as a commission, just quick vote of hands, you know, yes, I want to talk more about this. That's the only decision you need to make at this point. So for example, example, liquefaction and geotech has been a big concern, especially in the Beryl District, and so, you know, if you want to talk more about that, quick show of hands, and we'll note it, and we'll come back to it.
Let's have a show of hands. Who would like to have more discussion about liquefaction and geotech? Christian?
Absolutely.
Unanimous?
Okay. And I want to make this just a little bit...
Ready to move on?
Yeah, hang tight here. Sorry, I'm trying to adjust this so that folks can see what we're actually doing. Say again? I want the public to be able to see what...
A process question about what you're asking. On, on the chart that we had in our packet, for each of these headings, there are a number of items that are on there. Are we going to go through this process for the items under those headings as well, or are we just addressing the headings?
What packet page are you on, June?
The, the matrix that we got under liquefaction and geotech, there were two items, and EIR will include analysis of soils and project level foundation studies.
Was that what was emailed today, or is this in the packet?
No, this, this, was it what was you, it was yesterday? Was it yesterday?
Can you hit an X?
So are we, are we addressing that chart, or are we just addressing what we're looking at on the screen?
Just addressing what we're looking at here. So, in other words, the first item was liquefaction and geotech. We all agree we'll want to talk more about that. And so now, moving on to sea level rise, does, how does commissioners feel? You feel either comfortable with the studies that we've received today, or you'd like to have more discussion about sea level rise? Yes to more discussion on sea level rise? Dan, Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Judith, yes? Christian?
Yes.
We would all like to hear more discussion on sea level rise. And I, process-wise, I just want to say, there's, there's, we may want to discuss everything on this list at more detail, and that's fine. So we're not trying to get to a specific outcome, just important that everyone says what their concerns are. Affecting the character of small town, do we feel like we're comfortable with the plan and how it affects or doesn't affect the character of our town, or how do people feel regarding the need to discuss character in more detail?
I would like to further explore that. I feel like the community has a lot of concerns and objections, and we need more engagement.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I think it's a great topic. I think there might want to be a slash, you know, state law mandates in some of the realities of, change is coming.
Ways, that can go under ways that we would address or feel better about that. Judith, would you like to have more discussion around character? Christian?
Yeah, more discussion, please.
Okay, and maybe one way to speed this part of the conversation up a little bit is, you know, everything that's on here is likely to be a yes, so if there's any that are no's for any commissioner, maybe you can raise that as an objection, and otherwise we'll put Xs on all of these, or...
I, I'd like to at least just kind of go through them one by one.
Okay, okay.
And, and I'm, I'm fine to say, let's assume we want more discussion, but let's take them one by one.
Okay.
Does anyone not want to discuss wastewater treatment?
I, I'd like to change the item on that list, because we're, we're addressing, or will need to address, not just treatment capacity, but vulnerability, in particular to sea level rise at that location. And, and that's, that doesn't really appear to be on the list here.
Or, or it's something that we could detail under sea level rise specifically?
You okay with adding a new line item, or you want to put it under one of the others?
I, I'd kind of like to have it under the wastewater treatment concerns.
Is that okay? Vulnerability, under wastewater treatment capacity? If we add vulnerability as well as capacity?
Yes, that would do it.
Okay, staff could add vulnerability under wastewater treatment, so that in addition to capacity, we're looking at vulnerability, specifically, perhaps as regards SLR.
Okay.
There's a colon in vulnerability there, semicolon.
We'll, we'll clean things up later. This keyboard is not my normal keyboard. You're going to see a lot of typos. Let's get through the material.
Okay. Active recreation open spaces. Does anyone not want to have more conversation? Active recreation open spaces? Okay, let's make that an X. Christian, I'm assuming you're going to jump in if you, you're sticking with us here. Shading impacts on nearby buildings. Does anyone not want to discuss that? Parking? Ownership opportunities? Accessibility?
I'm just curious if you could clarify accessibility?
Yeah, what we're referring to here is ADA and ultra, yeah.
Can I just ask, isn't that code? Like, wouldn't accessibility just be mandated into every one of these structures?
But we don't have to do the minimum?
It would be, absolutely, and, and there are folks who have raised the question, you know, can we ask for more? Can we go above and beyond? And one of the ideas was to incorporate that into a, you know, community amenity.
Got it. Moving on, gentrification, housing affordability. Does anyone not want to discuss more about that? Okay. Lack of multimodal infrastructure. We'd all like to discuss more of that. Can you scroll the list up? Okay. Impacts on the Creamery District, Creamery Building. Is there anyone that doesn't want to discuss impacts on the Creamery District or building?
Would that roughly fall under the historic resources topic? Is that really what the reference is?
It could be historic resources, or it might also be reflected in details in the form-based code, where we might want to make requirements that buildings that surround the Creamery reflect the architectural history of the Creamery?
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Fire and police service, and adequate staffing and/or equipment. Just going to assume we're all going to need a little more information there. Can you scroll that list up, please? Population projections.
I, I'm not sure why that's on there. I don't know, I mean, the assumption is that we're in an increasing population with increasing development opportunity. I, I don't know.
I think with this one, I'm probably comfortable with staff projections on population, and don't really need to spend more time on that.
I concur. I think David did a good job discussing that earlier.
Dan, were you saying you're comfortable with current population projections?
Well, yeah, I, I would not put an X on that one. I feel like we've talked about that.
Kim?
I'm okay, then.
Judith?
I, I, I think those are a set of assumptions that are the basis of the plan, and, and these types of things are policy-driven statements, so I'm not sure it is appropriate here, so I'd, I'd cut that off for this one as well.
Okay. We don't need further discussion on population projections. Effect on businesses. And I'm, I'm assuming that that means either monetary or traffic or other implications or effects on existing businesses by expanded population in the gateway?
Yeah, I think that that's more along the lines of what we've heard, and concerns about potentially having to relocate businesses that are existing.
Got it. Wait till we get our list back up. Effects on businesses. I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure how that's going to be... Fiscal impacts is, is something else we would be discussing. Presumably fiscal impacts would include impacts on business. Things like sea level rise, liquefaction, I...
I, I could see it being something, I, I mean, if there was a nice presentation on it, you know, are there other places for some of the types of businesses that will potentially get unhoused? Where would they move to? You know, are there parts of Arcata that have... Where would they move to? You know, are there parts of Arcata that have that kind of development warehouse, whatever it is? I don't know. It feels like a topic that we might want to hear something on, if it's out there.
Does anyone not want to hear more discussion on the effect on businesses from the Gateway Area Plan? Okay, we'll put that on the list and move on to loss of L Street. I would definitely like to hear more about, have an expanded discussion on the L Street situation.
Is there a way to phrase that differently?
Than the L Street situation?
Maybe future of L Street and transportation or circulation proposals in the draft or something.
I think the concern, the concern that was raised is that the current plan will result in a loss of the Linear Park on L Street. So we can rephrase that however you want.
How about L Street future?
So it'd be loss of L Street as it is, or Linear Park, or what?
With this, the, framing it that way assumes that the default is the loss of L Street.
That's why I referred to it as the L Street situation, because in my mind, that sort of encompassed all the potential changes that could or may or may not happen to L Street.
We could just say L Street and leave it at that.
Yeah, or maybe changes to L Street.
Fine, L Street. I think we all want to discuss L Street situation or otherwise. Fiscal impacts. Yeah, we need to hear more about fiscal impacts. From my perspective, does anyone not want to hear more about fiscal impacts?
Yeah, I mean, that fits into fire, it fits into the, all the infrastructure.
Affordability, all the other things, yeah.
Okay, and, and, and there, pretty explicitly, we have seen references to a finance district, but no actual proposal material whatsoever. And so, in terms of, you know, finance options rather than fiscal impacts, I think that would be the, the level of policy that we're interested in knowing more about.
Yeah, as we move on, we'll talk about what we can, what, what kind of information would help us address these issues. Tsunami possibility, storm surge. Does anyone not want to hear more of a discussion about the possible impacts from a tsunami or storm surge? Okay, let's put that on the list. Lack of diversity in design. I'm assuming that means lack of architectural diversity?
Yeah, some people have been concerned that, that by adopting this plan, that we'll have a, it will result in a lack of diversity in design.
Okay, let's put that on the list. Equity ownership opportunities.
That's been touched on already a couple of times up above, hasn't it?
Yeah, I feel that is, they're the same there.
Maybe a subset of ownership opportunities?
I think it's still addressed above.
Scroll up, David, and we can see possibly where that might fit.
Under gentrification, housing affordability possibly?
Yeah, exactly.
Or ownership opportunities?
Yeah, ownership opportunities. So, let's, let's combine those two together. I don't think that needs to be a separate piece.
Okay, now we're getting into some of the issues that were identified in the Slido poll tonight. So, again, we're, we're putting down everything that comes up.
As of cell number 70, we're now into, is that where we are now?
Yes.
Okay, city staff not telling the whole story. Presumably that means about Gateway Area Plan, and what is or is not happening?
I think that comes under like maybe community engagement, or right below, public comment, voices.
Community engagement hasn't been on here yet, has it?
It's public comment.
Okay, oh, there you go, right there.
I think Kim's looking ahead to the next, the next item. If I'm honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure what city staff not telling the whole story means exactly, whether that means not effectively sharing information about the Gateway Area Plan, or whether that's speaking to something further afield. I'm not exactly sure, I.
I think I wrote this verbatim without any additional context out of here. What I take it to mean is that there's a, you know, feeling of lack of trust and transparency in the process.
I don't need anything on that one.
I don't need anything on that either, because I think any of the concerns that might be embedded in that are going to be more than daylighted in the discussions we've already talked about and put on the list for further discussion. Kim? Oh, Judith, go ahead.
I think we need to talk about the public process of the plan itself. It certainly seems to be very much on the minds of the members of the public who have spoken in our meetings. Even this proposal that we've agreed to discuss about a potential advisory group is talking about public process, and so I think that that should be very much part of what we need more information about, and what should be on our agenda to discuss.
Thank you. Christian?
Yeah, I think we need to better define our public process in regards of how we're discussing this whole entire plan. I feel, yeah, as we move forward, you know, we need to be transparent and describe specifics of what we're going to converse upon. I understand this is an interim process, and it's informal, but, you know, this is supposed to be a formal group, and we just need to tighten, we need to tighten things up.
Let's put that on the list. Can we get?
Wait, public process, you mean?
No, I, well, go back, I think we were on cell 70 is where we were, city staff not telling the whole story, and I think that's merging into issues of trust around the, the process.
So, if they had addressing issues of trust, slash, public process, something like that?
I think staff just wrote verbatim something that came through Slido from the public.
Okay, then if it's verbatim right there, I, I don't need to hear anything more on that. If it's public process, I agree. I would enjoy a fleshed out conversation with the group about public process.
Then let's, let's go ahead and change that to public process discussion, and assume that that encapsulates any concerns about, quote, city staff not telling the whole story. Is everyone comfortable with that?
I think David put in there transparency, we probably want to keep that in there. I think that's been one of the emerging concerns.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
You put transparency in there, and then you took it out?
I took it out because it was actually out of a different comment that was, I was trying to combine the two. Since you said no to that one, I removed transparency, and I'll put it on another line item.
Let's go back up to where we left off. I don't, cell 70, I think is where we were.
Oh, there it is, transparency.
So, we vote no on cell 70, because I feel like in order to have community buy-in, we need to address it.
All I said was, the way it reads right now, I don't need any more information on that specific. If it's about public process and transparency, or something a little bit more broad than I can, you know, feel the need to engage in, then I'm.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think if we, can we create a cell that says public process? Because there may be other issues like city not telling the whole story that we can tuck into or address with the discussion about public process. Are you comfortable with that, Judith? Did you get that, David?
Yep. Is this good, public process, transparency?
Perfect. So let's go back up to cell 73. I think, considered below, considered below, that's going to be a part of public process. Construction impacts.
This is not verbatim, but it mentioned construction impacts related to, you know, the construction traffic, and then ongoing noise associated with construction.
Is there a discussion topic that we've already identified that would incorporate construction impacts into it?
I don't think there's a standalone topic there. It would be addressed in the EIR, and there are going to be temporary construction impacts with projects.
Does the, does exist? Go ahead, Christian.
This will be evaluated in our air noise and greenhouse gas component of our EIR. I'd assume for the project and also for the construction of, of, of the, you know, the build of, of the gateway area, I suppose.
One thing that the EIR is not likely to address would, would be the wide range of ongoing disruption that would be involved in changes in things like street patterns and non-environmental processes that could go on for 20 years, including, you know, discontinuities in bike paths and possible reroutings of streets. They're not necessarily environmental impacts, but they will definitely affect people's lives in the area. And so, I, I think that talking about possible construction impacts beyond those that an EIR would consider is going to be important, and it might have something to do with the phasing of projects and a whole wide range of things that are important to daily life in Arcata. So I, I'd like to keep that in there.
Can staff speak to whether or not our existing code or the proposed Form Based Code would address any of these concerns around construction impacts already?
I mean, there would be, you know, as there are in our current code, you know, conditions around construction. I don't want anybody to think that we're saying that we're going to completely mitigate construction noise and construction traffic. If we have significant development, the construction, you know, is going to be a, a component of that.
I mean, I, yeah, I think we all accept that there's going to be noise and disruption in association with this kind of construction.
I agree, and I personally don't need any more information on that.
One of the reasons I think that it, it should be something that we look at more is it is possible to have policies that say, you know, if you're, if you're going to change a traffic pattern on a street, you have to do it, you know, all at once, or you do it in increments, and to make decisions about those things, and, and to do those things publicly and not assume that, and traffic engineer is going to have the best answer. So, it, it's those types of things I'm thinking about, effects that last for 20 years, not during the construction phase of a single project. And those are things that the city can explore and provide policy guidance in a plan.
Got it. Christian, are you comfortable with concerns about construction impacts? Or is this something you feel like you need to have more discussion about?
I feel, I feel there's conditions that we can place upon each project, and also, I feel there'll be deliberation in respects to the EIR regarding, for instance, like the Maggotory-Bird Treaty, you know, Act in regards of when we can do specific pile driving operations, if that's going to occur, you know, in respect to, you know, taller structures, potentially hydroacoustic components as well as we get closer to watercourses and so forth. There's a bunch of limiting factors in construction that, for instance, the permitting agencies, they're going to have an opportunity in respects to site-specific components, and also the overall formal comment process in our EIR. So.
So, it sounds like you, I'm not a hundred percent sure where you land on that. It sounds like you're seeing that a lot of these are going to be addressed in the EIR. Are you saying that you do or do not want to hear more in discussions around construction impacts?
Us, well, we're talking about multiple things here, you know, Judith just mentioned transportation components in respect, in respect to traffic flow. You know, there's noise, there's air, there's a bunch of components associated with, you know, construction disturbances in regards of, you know, adjoining communities or within the gateway area. Yeah, I, I don't know, you know, and this, again, this is all hypothetical. We, we never know that this, if there's, you know, this may be all constructed, it may not all be constructed. So, I feel, you know, we can assume that this whole area is going to be built out, and then we can, you know, we can address it that way, and, you know, try to figure out how we're going to get a consultant, or, or our city engineer to describe it, you know, in one way, how this is going to, you know, all come, you know, all come undone, or come together.
It sounds like you would like to, you're a yes for more discussion on construction impacts.
Sure, let's do it.
Kim?
That's an absolute yes. What I'm hearing from the public is those that actually live there, they are concerned that this is going to be a 20-year process, and I think that in order to ease the concerns of the people who live there, we should have that conversation.
Let's add that to the list, David. January open house not compiled.
I abbreviated this a bit. There was a comment that we haven't released compiled data from our January open house that we have with the community.
I don't need to hear anything more about this myself.
My understanding is that it was compiled on Fred Weiss's site, so we do have that information now? Is there more to be done?
We, the city has put the information together in the, the engagement report that is kind of a living document. It's, it's, you know, compiling information as we go through successive stages of engagement. I think some people have put forward that we didn't compile the information and, and report on it the way that they would have liked to have had it been reported on, and I, I understand and respect that. You know, one of the things that we're balancing is the, you know, where we focus our, our limited resources, and, you know, I think we've, we've heard many people in the public acknowledge that these types of events, the kinds of surveys we're doing, they're not statistically supported. They're really just a snapshot of the people who are there. And so, investing a lot of energy into, you know, trying to make something of that event when its primary function was to, you know, get people interested in, to know what's going on with the Gateway Area Plan, to view it as a snapshot of the information from the people who attended that event. I think we've done that effectively, and it's on our website currently under the Community Engagement Report.
So I guess my question is, before we move on, because I can't see what's below it. I think the reason that people want to have that information compiled is that I feel like the gap is that there's no official survey or questionnaire that's gone through all the residents? Is that later that we're going to have that addressed, or?
I think that's a different matter. It's this, I don't think this is talking about the survey, and, and I'm, if I read into this and, and look at what I think the concerns are around this question, it sounds to me like concerns not being heard or not being presented to the public. And I think what we're doing right now is looking at every possible concern that we or the public here or on Zoom has. So for me, I think not only, I think we're addressing this issue by the process that we're in right now, and I, I don't feel like I need to tag this for further discussion. Kim, you agree?
Totally.
Christian?
I concur.
Okay, so let's not that, put that one on. Judith?
I think it helps for the city to point out where that information is recorded, and also to, to thank Fred for putting that stuff on the website as well. I, I'm actually encouraged to see that members of the public have captured a level of detail before overworked city staff has been able to do that. It's all, it's, it's all very helpful coming together.
Thanks, Judith. It's four to one, so let's not put that on the list. Transportation Safety Committee ignored. Does staff have a sense of? Transportation Safety Committee ignored. Um, does staff have a sense of specifically what that means?
That's in regard to L Street, and that is on the, I think we talked about it at the very beginning, and that's kind of why we put out the information um on the new draft, so you'll be seeing.
The discussion we've already pegged about L Street is gonna cover that, so let's not.
Absolutely.
Let's not add that. Um, what's, can we moved on to the scroll up so we can see what the next item to discuss is? Please? Buildings not built soon enough.
And again, I think this is verbatim. Um, the way I take this is that uh their concern is that the housing we need, the buildings, the jobs aren't going to be built soon enough.
I I certainly share the sense of urgency around that and feel like the process that we're in is is getting thus there as as quickly as we can all go uh having thoughtful discussions. Uh, does anyone need to have more discussion on this item?
The less discussion we have on some of these items will be the sooner that buildings get built.
Agreed. Christian, are you in agreement there?
Agreement.
Judith? Okay, let's not put that on the list. Who is making money on the buildings plan? Well, I would suggest, I don't, I mean, I suppose it's, 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 you could interpret that in a variety of different ways. I would, I would presume that uh the builders of the buildings are going to make money on it, but um presumably people who purchase units in there may also make money on this.
So could I add to that? Um, what I've heard from several people in the community is they were wanting to see an overlay on the various districts by how many owners own it? Um, you know, say, for example, I don't know, the Beryl District, is there a multitude of owners, or is there a particular district where there might be only one or two owners? So I think that people just want to feel like there's transparency and that everything's on the up and up, and I think that's a conversation worth having. I mean, hopefully we can get through it quickly and appease people's fears, but if we don't address it, then people are gonna think we're hiding.
I understand the question, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure this, there's, there's no way we could have that information right now. The, the, you're, that requires a level of specificity that the city and none of us have because.
Actually, any real estate agent can get the AP.
We can ident- we can identify this through tax records, you know, I mean, the count, the city can identify this through the county assessor's office.
Or or the public that's interested in that topic. We don't need to address it as a a part of the
I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm confused then about the question.
This is like conspiracy.
It, it seems to me, the question strikes me as a, as a suspect question of is there something nefarious going on with the gateway plan and who is making money on the plan? Is that, do, do other people interpret that in a different way? I would say at this point, no one is making money on the gateway plan. We're, we're here volunteering in the city, spending money to put the plan together. At some point in the future, a variety of people will make money on the bu- on the buildings, including potential restaurants or businesses that would go in there. I'm not, I'm just not sure how we would answer that question.
So again, if you go to who owns the land, that can be identified through any realtor or, as Chris said, public records. I think that if we just put that on the table, there's gonna look like there's transparency, that nobody's trying to hide anything.
But how does identifying who owns a piece of property now tell you who's gonna make money off of that property in the future? I don't, I don't see the connection.
I say no on that one personally. If, if we're.
Yeah, I say no. I don't think it's a useful discussion. I think it's just, it's just gonna burn time and not really give us any useful information. Judith?
Information about ownership of the property um is public record. It's easy to find. Um, who will make money on the buildings on the plan? Um, that may be something that we want to have some policy discussions about, but I wouldn't phrase it in those terms. And so far, the only one making money on the plan are the consultants that the city is hiring. Um, and I do appreciate that in our packet for this week, we actually have some additional information about who they are and how much money is involved. Um, that's actually very helpful in figuring out the scope of what the city and staff and the planning commission can do. Um, but I don't think that it needs to be here in this form or in that way.
Are you in agreement, Christian?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, let's not that, put on the, not put that one on the list. Uh, I think the next question is pretty much the same in my mind. Who will own the buildings? There's no way for us to possibly answer the question about who's gonna own a building that hasn't even been designed or built yet. I don't, I don't see that as a useful exercise.
And I do think ownership is included elsewhere above as well.
Let's not put on the list. That's, that's very close to the question we just discussed. Um, why so high? I would say no to that because um we, we are looking at all the pieces of the building heights as a part of this exercise, so I think that would be, that's an important question, but peeling it out as a separate item is redundant to discussions we've already said we wanna have. Affordable rents, um, number seven ninety-seven. Um, I think that's an important question, but I think it's addressed above. Thank you. We're definitely gonna include that in at least a couple of the discussions we've already um, uh, targeted. Cal Poly Humboldt, oops. That's okay. Cal Poly Humboldt needs to pull their weight. For example, for fire. I'm gonna assume, first of all, that we've already said we wanna have discussions about fire um and talk with someone from the fire department. I think we, we discussed fire at the very beginning and I'm gonna uh also just make an assumption that Cal Poly is not gonna build a building that they can't have fire and emergency services prepared for.
I'm wondering if there's a question later then that talks about Cal Poly Humboldt needing to come to the table and be part of the process.
We don't have that on the list yet. I can add it.
I think that, I think that um it would be useful to talk about policies with regard to um roles of Cal Poly and collaboration um with the city, recognizing that the university cannot be compelled to comply with the policies and and regulatory framework that this plan will come up with. Uh, so the question then becomes policies that we can include that will encourage them to do what the city would like them to do.
Okay, so um I think what's unhelpful about cell one hundred is EG Fire, but perhaps a discussion about CPH collaboration is something that people would like to hear more about? Yes?
I think that also the separate cons- well, I guess it is collaboration, so infrastructure would come under that collaboration. Okay.
So let's collabor- CPH collaboration, yes.
I, I, I would, I would maybe go beyond that and and say um Cal Poly um and city roles because I, I think it, it's not just collaboration.
For the purpose of.
Seems to me like we, in, in a discussion about collaboration, that would be an opportunity for us to sort of flesh out some of those questions.
Okay.
Can I ask a process question real quick?
Of course.
Um, I'm just a little concerned that the inputs might be just running on ahead of, you know, so far, how far we've gotten, and it's eight thirty, and I just wonder if if we're gonna get to the next phase of this opportunity.
I think we get as far as we get, and I think part of this is the transparency of specifically asking um whether or not we wanna discuss the questions that the, the public is bringing up.
Then can the commission stay really focused on, if we've already addressed it, let's just move?
And maybe keep our answers to yes or no. Do you wanna hear more information? Yes or no? And then we can discuss this all and we'll discuss it all later. Okay, I've lost track of where we were. Um, transparency in business and monetary links between the company doing this project and people promoting it. I'm gonna say no, because there is no company at this point doing this project. It's the city in conjunction with all of us as residents trying to address our housing crisis. Um, my vote is no.
I totally agree, and we've already addressed the same topic.
Kim? Christian?
Christian, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Yeah, yeah, I said no.
Okay.
I was moving forward.
Got it. That's three noes. Kim, do you need to hear more about that?
I think we covered it in the earlier one.
Okay, let's say no and keep moving. Um, publ- public, oh, planning commission should be reflective of the majority of the community first and foremost. I'm not even sure what to say. Um, I think honestly that the planning commission, there's a, there's, I would say no. We've got a, a wide diversity of opinion here where there's a lot we don't agree about, but I appreciate that we have good discussions.
I just think they're referring to community engagement again.
Which we've addressed.
Which we've addressed.
Covered. No. Public process transparency, we've definitely uh same covered. City needs to buy land for wastewater treatment plant relocation before zoning changes triple land values.
We've addressed, that would be a subset. We've already addressed wastewater.
No. Can you scroll up, David?
Uh, to, to which point?
Uh, we're, I can't see anything past one oh nine.
I was just trying to catch a, a
I think we're saying that wastewater treatment plant, we've already pegged that for a discussion and that this discussion would be part of that.
Yeah, I caught two votes, uh, Christian, Kimberly.
No. Yeah, let's move on.
Okay. Six, five, and four stories make sense for Arcata and hope will be supported by most in our community. That's what we're trying to do. This is in the numerous, this is already covered in our discussions. Let's, no. Okay. Um, city needs to buy land for parks.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to round out the vote. We've got a couple.
I'm, I'm assuming that if no one speaks, they're in agreement with the majority. Maybe that's not a s- safe assumption. I think, i- is everyone in agreement that we're already incorporated a number of discussions that will address six, five, and four stories making sense for Arcata?
Yes.
Do you agree with that?
We eliminated, we eliminated eight. You know, we're starting at seven. So, no.
I, I think that it's subsumed in what we're already discussing here.
Moving on. City needs to buy land for parks before zoning changes triple land values.
There, there, there is in the revised um version of the draft plan um a policy item about uh city land acquisition efforts and resources. Um, it, it's something that I have suggested, and so some more information about um that policy.
Just for expedience, can we just say yes or no if we want more discussion on an item? Thank you.
Could be useful.
Dan, yes?
I'm a no on that.
I, I, I wouldn't frame it that way, though. I, I, I would put up an item on there about um pub- publicly owned open space, which uh hasn't really appeared on this list that we have before us.
So, so are we looking, so are we looking at land acquisition?
Yes.
Let's just say land acquisition.
I, I would just say, yeah, land acquisition and public open space ownership. Or something like that.
And you're a no on that discussion or a yes?
I'm a yes. That's what I was suggesting.
Judith is yes, Kim is yes, Dan, you're a no?
I'll go yes now that it's land acquisition in general.
Let's put land acquisition on the list.
And that's a yes for me.
Thank you. Process and substance have been hijacked by a small group of activists, activists that do not represent the city. That's a no for me. Does anyone feel they need to discuss that?
I, I'm gonna say no because that's why we're doing this right now.
Judith, yes or no?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No, for Christian.
Thank you, Christian. Um, the planning commission seems unable to move forward. Any significant action to address the housing crisis and the climate crisis can often feel like that, but I think we're making some progress this evening. I don't think we need to add this to the list of things we need to hear more about. I'm a no on this.
No.
Judith?
No.
Christian?
No.
Where are the sources for infrastructure funding upgrades? I think that's a fair question, but is encapsulated in some of the items that we've already identified for further discussion, so I'm gonna say uh answered above, or.
Could, could I just ask a, we've talked about infrastructure for the wastewater treatment plant. We've talked about it for um the fire district, but there are other infrastructure.
We talked about transportation. We talked about business impacts. I can think of a variety of different places in which infrastructure funding upgrades will be part of the discussion.
I agree. It's well phrased there, but we've really.
Important.
I also, I also wanna point out that you're gonna be talking about all of these things generally through the process. The, the question is, do you wanna have further discussion tonight or at a follow-up meeting related to this work tonight so that you could identify additional resources to uh bring to bear on this decision-making process?
That we think we're not gonna already get in other items we've already pegged for discussion.
And you could, you could decide on that in the next phase. So if you're concerned that you're not gonna have, you know, water infrastructure, for example, we can have that discussion.
Judith?
I, I think it's already subsumed in one of the items that we've said yes to.
Yeah, agreed. Included above. One twenty-two, artist live workspace.
I kind of feel like that one, well, it's not, but, you know, we have gentrification and some of the other affordable housing and all kinds of stuff that's easily will morph into that same discussion, but if anybody wants specifically art, live workspace discussion, presentation.
Did we have a particular area we do of workforce housing in general?
Well, we discussed affordable housing and, and um.
But that is separate. Workforce housing, artist live workspace is different than it's a subcategory of, I mean, hopefully it would be affordable.
Okay. So you're a yes for wanting to hear more about that?
Yes.
Dan?
Uh, yes.
Christian?
Uh, I, I kinda feel like it's discussed above. You know, I mean, we can incorporate it as a subsection of things that we're discussing regarding affordability, gentrification, you know, I, I feel, I feel no, because we're discussing it above.
Okay, thank you. Judith, yes or no?
I think it's incorporated in things that we will be um discussing and getting more information about.
I agree. So I think, given that, I think we can just peg that as incorporated above or however you've been uh detailing that, David.
Could I ask, David, when these are being incorporated, are you making notes and making them a sub of, you know, another subcategory so they don't fall between the cracks and we're tracking it?
This is gonna be an enduring record. Uh, we're gonna post it on our website. Um, you'll have access to it.
We're generating a list right now that.
To any of these topics. You can expand on the topics. Again, we're just trying to get something on the table to keep it moving forward.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity and per Dan's observation earlier, how, how many more, how far, what is the, what is the end of this list?
We are uh close to the end. I'm going back and double checking. I believe the poll is still open.
Yeah, the poll's still open and there are a couple more. I'm flagging once Dave is done.
Okay, design standards limiting housing production. Um, I think that's an important question, but I think we've got that covered in some of, a couple of, at least of the items we've already pegged for discussion, so I'm gonna say no. Or incorporated above.
I would say incorporated above.
Incorporated.
Say incorporated above.
Okay, so let's, do, Kim, you.
I will concur.
Thank you. Separate gateway area plan from the general plan twenty forty-five, and I can only read as far as go with specific.
Yes.
They go with a specific plan or something else. Um, I think this was addressed in a, a comment earlier uh to, to break these up for considerations around uh recusals and whatnot.
I, I don't remember addressing this topic. If, if, if we're being redundant, then I don't wanna hear it again, but I just don't remember.
We haven't addressed this on this list. We've addressed this, uh, I believe, uh, ad infinitum in the public discourse to date. We're currently on the um, the gateway plan being an element of the general plan and the form-based code being a form-based code. Um, those are the decisions that, you know, I think have been made. Those are the decisions that, you know, I think have been made. Certainly, you know, any of the choices that you've made previously, we can go back and revisit them. That's the purpose of this process, but at some point, we have to make forward progress, you know, by, by making these decisions and then making the next set of decisions that go along with those.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking back on our 10 months of general discussions. I thought we were just going by the list, so I don't need a further presentation on it.
I don't need anything more on this. That's a no. Judith?
I don't need to hear more information on it. It could be in some future time that the city council may want to address this with us.
That's a yes?
Uh, it's actually a no.
It's a no, okay. Kim? You said yes, sorry. Christian, is this something you want to hear more about?
No.
Okay, I think the noes have it there. I'm sorry, David, I, I lost track of what, what I...
Bring Wiat into the, the discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
Bring Wiat into the discussion. Commissioners want to have more discussion here?
Yes.
Yes. I'll say yes. Kim's a yes. Let's, let's put that on the list. Christian, just...
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and I'm going to check in. Do we have others added to the list? I've been trying to capture what I've seen.
Yeah, I think there are a couple other ones. Requirements for solar was near the bottom. I'm not sure if that's already captured somewhere else on the list. I think shading is, so maybe that's redundant.
Isn't that state law now?
Yeah, requirements for solar. I guess that, I mean, yeah.
I, I wonder if we could add a general reference to the form-based code and energy design standards and then say that, yeah, we are, we are planning to address that.
Yeah, and I think that's the direction we're headed and required by law, so if that's, yeah, we would, yeah.
So, is staff saying that this is something that's already part of code?
Um, yeah, the, certainly there are requirements for solar on, on new builds. And then, in addition, we've had discussions around incentivizing, you know, buildings to go above and beyond, you know, up to and including having, you know, microgrids and those sorts of things that would be, you know, way above and beyond. So, some of that is in the document. If you, again, want to have a conversation about that, highlight to the, the public where those are listed and then decide that you've got enough in your, your tool belt to address those questions, you can certainly continue to have that discussion. But, yeah, I agree with Dilo, it's already, already incorporated.
Yeah, I mean, it's important to me, but I don't think I need a more, an expanded discussion about it. I would say no.
I would say no, too.
Judith, yes or no?
Yes, as, as long as we are going to discuss it explicitly when we talk about the codes and the community benefits program, then it's incorporated there already.
Christian?
Would say no.
Say no.
Okay.
Okay, and then there are a couple more. So, one was need scientific survey. I'm not sure if that would fall under community engagement or if there's a need to explicitly articulate that one.
Could you say that again, Dilo?
Yeah, need scientific survey.
I don't see that under community engagement. I think that's a separate issue. Yes.
Um, I, I still don't quite understand what needs scientific survey meaning.
Of the community.
I see.
On Gateway in general or...
Thank you.
Okay, so the vote on that was...
So, we're, we're calling this statistically valid survey? Is that...
That's what I wrote, but I can call it whatever you want to call it.
Okay, I'm just making sure that's the same thing that we just said.
I think that we're wanting something that is more quantitative than qualitative, which is what we did in January, and that I'm hearing from the community that they'd like it to go out to all residents.
Personally, I would put that under the community engagement umbrella because I think it exactly fits that.
And public process.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say incorporated above would be my vote.
Yeah, and this is something, again, that, you know, I think could be a potential outcome. If you recall, you know, from the original discussion, that that may be a solution set, you know, it's been suggested by
Right.
communities. So, this, if you're okay with that, I would drag this into the solution set column.
Please. Are you okay with that, Judith?
Yeah.
Christian, does that sound okay to you?
Sounds good to me.
All right. So, are, does that bring us to the end of...
Oh, ho, no, it doesn't. Nope, you got a couple more. Okay, only a few, though, I'm sorry.
I think for the sake of process, we're going to stop taking new additions at this point, so we're going to finalize the few that you have there.
Yeah, I think I might be able to just...
Can we close the poll?
Deactivate topic. Okay, great.
Okay, lay them on me, we'll lay them all out and then we'll go back and discuss them.
Identify all types and sizes of wetlands. That's one, and then the next is finance district. And then the last is standards that would limit housing production, and those are what I captured that we did not yet have.
Okay, the finance district, I think, is incorporated above. I did, there, there were some that were slight nuances to, there were a lot of discussion, for example, in the comments about, you know, this size building or that size building. I didn't incorporate all of those because you're discussing the building heights. What was the, the, and so the finance district is also incorporated in a prior, prior discussion. What was the last one?
Standards that would limit housing production, which also could fall under, I think, some of the other topics that are already on the board.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would say, and certainly identify all wetlands is going to be a core part of the EIR.
Yeah, that's all EIR and state law.
So, let's go through them. Well, we're, we're up to, are we at 133 energy design standards in the form-based code?
Yeah, this was recommended by Commissioner Mayor.
Well, is that not...
That, that was the more general category that the energy things would come under, rather than a separate item.
So, it sounds like we don't need that as a separate item and that maybe it's going to be covered in other discussions in your mind?
Totally agree.
Great, so I think we can, statistically valid survey, I think we're saying part of the public process discussion we've already identified. Identify all wetlands, clearly part of the EIR. Don't need more discussion on that as far as I'm concerned. We know we're going to discuss it a lot.
Excuse me, one of the, one of the questions that came up had to do not just with the general wetland identification that would happen in an EIR, but actual wetland delineations, which are more detailed and usually beyond the scope of an EIR if they haven't already been done. And I would actually like to have some more discussion of that because I think it, it...
Okay, can staff give us some sense of whether or not all, identifying all wetlands would be, would that or would that not be part of the process that's already mapped out?
Yeah, no, that's absolutely not part of the process that we have mapped out currently. What we intend to do currently is to identify the wetlands in the complex that's in the Beryl district that we have proposed for enhancement and potential, you know, wetland banking, that we would, you know, identify those wetlands and then identify the, the areas that we would see as being viable for, for restoration opportunities. We, you know, you can certainly discuss this. The preview to what staff's recommendation would be in terms of that is to not do this. Again, it would be, you know, throwing good money after bad because we could go and identify all the wetlands that are extant now, but wetlands change over time, and so if we identify every, every wetland that's in the area now and no one develops for 10 years, the wetlands will likely change. And so, there's no, no good effect to, to identify them now.
We, we do have a, we do have a no net loss of wetlands policy, though, that was listed in the draft. And so, I'd like more information. That's what we're talking about here.
Judith is a yes on discussing?
About how the, about how the plan should address this.
Okay.
The note, the note, the wetland no less law, no, no less, excuse me. The whole wetland standard essentially is, is set by state law and set by the State Water Resource Control Board. So, it's driven by regulatory policy, and just like David was saying, any wetland investigation at this time, in, in addition to botanical surveys, have a shelf life. And so, I don't know if that's the best bang for our buck in regards of utilizing city resources.
So, I'm, I'm taking that as a no?
It may not be, it may not be valid in five years.
Is that a no, Christian?
That is a big no for me.
Okay.
And it's a no for me.
That's a no for me as well. Kim? That's three to two, I think. Standards that would limit housing production.
That's addressed above.
Yeah, addressed above, agreed. Is everyone comfortable with that? Addressed above? Christian, are you, you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Kim? Kimberly?
Apparently I'm rummy again. Could you point out where that was addressed above?
I think there's probably, in the discussion of form-based code, in discussion of addressing building height, I can think of a couple of different places where we're going to certainly explicitly deal with standards that would limit housing production. I mean, I think everything in the form-based code is going to be amount to a standard that's going to, in some ways, limit housing production.
Yeah, or it could potentially limit housing production. I think, I, I'm maybe reading into the, the statement, but I think the concern is that you'll develop standards that are actually going to limit housing production, but we need to increase housing production. So, I could be reading that wrong, but I thought, that's the way I took it.
In this final, I thought I stopped the poll, but they're still coming. There's someone that said the concern about view sheds of the bay was on the list, maybe not captured. Do we want to just add that one since we're here?
Let's add that and then let's cut this off and move on to the next portion of this discussion, as it's now 8:45 almost. Scroll up, David, can you scroll up just so I can see the bottom of that? View sheds of the bay, is this something that people want more discussion about?
Well, it definitely comes into the building height and a subcategory of that, no question.
Agreed. So, addressed above. You comfortable with that, Dan?
That's my opinion.
Kimberly, addressed above, feel good to you?
As long as we address it, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, well, we'll have this list work off of. Christian, are you comfortable that view sheds of the bay are going to be addressed above?
I feel they're addressed above and they're considered as aesthetic analysis and sequo.
Thank you. Judith?
Yeah, if they are incorporated, we just have to make sure that we get to talk about them before the EIR.
Okay. So, given that, it looks like we're at the end of this portion of the exercise this evening. We do... Well, the next, can, David, can you just talk about exactly where we're going to go from here now? Because as we're approaching nine o'clock, maybe we want to think about how much, how much further into this process we want to get before we wrap for the evening?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's probably wise. We have...
This feels like kind of an organic stopping point.
Yeah, probably come, another couple hours at least to, to get through this material. So, again, I'll make the offer. I'll buy the pizza if you want to stick around. But, yeah, it's probably, probably not worth trying to sort of crack into the next step of this. I mean, I guess the, the question would be, do you want to schedule a special meeting?
Yes.
And if, if so, we can look for some times next week that work for everyone, and I'll try and find a venue. Commissioner Mayor is shaking her head, absolutely not.
I, I think, I think given the continuity of the process, if, if, if we're going to need to remember what happened tonight in order to go to the next step, I'd way rather keep going tonight than schedule something next week.
Well, I just don't think we're going to be able to make very much more progress before we get to the point in our meetings where everyone's sort of flagging, and I, I don't want us to be trying to work through this with fading attention spans.
Vice Chair, can I make a recommendation?
Please.
Can we take a five-minute break?
That sounds like a good idea.
There you go. That's how, that's how we get to the next step. Appreciate it.
Uh, the challenge therein is if we're really going to wrap by nine, a five-minute break is
Yeah.
three minutes to nine or something.
I guess it...
This may be a request for a bio break, so I'll just put it out there.
Right.
Maybe a quick break.
Let's have, let's have a quick break and then discuss how much further we want to get this evening. Five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we're back on, uh, after that break. Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, we finished the first part of our planned progress this evening, and, uh, David, do you have a suggestion about how we might, make a short decision about making some proposals about some of the items we identified, so that we can, uh, make a little bit of progress left this evening?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm really interested to hear the feedback on how the process went tonight for, for various folks. Uh, certainly not right now, and I'm sure we will get that feedback. Um, you know, the intent was to get to a point where you could make some recommendations to the council for, uh, for resources that you, as a commission, feel like you need to continue to make your decisions. Uh, because we didn't get to that point, uh, with the, the entire process that we have laid out. Um, certainly if the commissioners want to, uh, you know, initiate some suggestions for a couple of key things that we can move forward. Um, you know, given what we know now, you know, operating under this, uh, the seven-six-five-four is sort of the, the revision that we'll make to the, the draft plan, and that coming with, you know, these impacts, and therefore we need these resources, you know, with that in mind. Um, so certainly that's, that's something you could do, and then we'll continue the process at a later.
Can we look at the list and try and maybe as a group, come up with maybe six areas where we want to get more resources?
Would it be more resources, or, and/or just how we get from, what is it we need, right? Whether it be resources or...
I mean, I think we're going to need a lot of resources to deal with a lot of these things, if we can perhaps prior, try and prioritize the most important things. And then we can get a request for more resources for how we can resolve some of the concerns around those issues. I would say, uh, that, that might give us, uh, some progress on the second portion of this exercise this evening before we wrap.
Okay, if we're looking for six, can I just throw out five that I think would jump right off of that list and, uh, be something that we might all want to just
Please.
start to consider? Building height, and is that number one on the list? It's, is it, could you scroll down, just to hear there?
Uh, this is, this is the top.
Okay. Um, sea level rise, the liquefaction, you know, buildability, geology, however you want to phrase that. Homeownership issues. And then traffic plan, walkability, you know, bikeability, multimodal issues.
I would like to add the wastewater treatment to that list.
Can, can I add that we definitely need more resources to address the details of the form-based code?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I have a question. Um, I'm wondering if we can get a resource for resources. So, can we go to city council to get to approve funds so that we can make these things happen? Isn't that like?
That's what we're trying to do this evening.
Okay. Um, so, when we're asking about resources, um, is this the time that we would make our requests of who we would like to have as far as experts, or is that later, or, or I'm just wanting to make sure? I had my list some time ago, and I'm not, they're not really the same as these guys.
David, can you take that question?
Um, yeah, I, I think the answer is yes.
Okay, um, then, s- s- if I'm, from what I wrote down, we have six main issues that we've identified: sea level rise, liquefaction and geotech, homeownership, bikeability and multimodal transportation, form-based code, and the wastewater treatment plant. That, to me, that sounds like a pretty strong six list to start with. Judith?
Um, we had started out in the exercise with, um, the L Street at the bottom. We need more information, but that doesn't necessarily mean we need money from the council. Um, and we also need information about, um, financing for infrastructure, but again, that doesn't necessarily require funds from the council, but it certainly requires a great deal more information. So, I, I know that those were the next two steps. One was information and one was resources, i.e. money. But I, I think, uh, to make sure that those things don't fall off a priority list, just because they're not going to cost money for the council to allocate is important.
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, if we, say we went through, through these one at a time, would we not be now trying to generate the sub-list of what it is we need, whether it be resources or information from other sources? I don't know.
Yeah, David, what would, what would the recommended next steps be if we had a sort of condensed for this evening, knowing that we're going to have to dig into this further at our next meeting? Um, if we could identify six topics, what would be the next step?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, some of these, uh, have a little bit of overlap, so the form-based code is going to cover, uh, a lot of different areas. We had put together a, the scope that we are currently under with regards to the form-based code, um, as well as a proposed additional scope that could be, um, you know, could, could be included uh, to, you know, get more engagement and also, uh, you know, more refinement in the form-based code itself, so, you know, more graphics, you know, et cetera. And so that, I guess, is an example of something that if you said, you know, with regard to the things that have overlap with the form-based code, we want to recommend the council, uh, approve, you know, either the scope that's in, you know, the, the staff report tonight, or, you know, adopt some additional scope to get more engagement and, and a better form-based code at the end of the day. I mean, we're going to have a good one, the way that we have it planned now, but we want a better one. That would be a, an actionable outcome from the discussion that you've had tonight that overlaps real closely with, uh, prior conversations you've had as well. Uh, wastewater treatment plant capacity, I think, would require a much more in-depth discussion, or the vulnerability dis, pieces, then, then you probably have time for tonight, because I'd want to go over, I'd want to cover all of the items that we have um, and, and, um, I'm sorry, all the studies that we have in hand, what we propose to have by the time we're done with the EIR, so that you could really, as a, as a commission, identify, here are the gaps that we think we see.
And it overlaps with sea level rise, right?
It does in a lot of, a lot of respects. There's kind of a capacity issue and then an adaptive issue. Um, and, you know, we can certainly bring back, I mean, I think from this list, staff can bring those conversation points back as agenda items, specific items to discuss uh, in your next gateway, uh, discussion, so that you can flesh that out in a little bit more detail.
Could I, um, add anything? I know that some people said we were stopping at six. I, is it? So, I don't know if this is going to be covered later, but I was hoping that the council would approve a standard of cover um, for an assessment, uh, risk assessment for the fire district department, um, or the, the fire, Arcade Fire District, that's what I'm trying to say. And I have a list of resources, I thought we were supposed to have them before we did this. So, whether they're used or not, I would sure love to just share them, but they're more of like who I would like to see as far as experts be invited, so is that something that I can share?
Well, I think...
You gave me homework. I want to turn my homework in.
Well, a- as often happens with these meetings, we don't always get as far as we think we're going to get. So, I, um, even if we put together a list, um, that we identify as priority issues we want to discuss, it doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to go through the rest of the list and find out how we're going to get answers to those questions, including fire and all the other kind of questions. I just, I, we're after nine o'clock now. We're not going to get through that whole list, so I'm not trying to suggest by shortening this process this evening that we're not going to get, continue to get through that list. I was just hoping that we could at least pick some highest priorities, so that we make some progress on the recommendation part, uh, or a request part for, for the issues that we think are the most more important before we, um, adjourn this meeting. Go ahead, Judith.
Yeah, I, I, I think one action we can make, um, tonight would be to request that staff bring our request to the city council for resources to address a list of topics. And I think that in terms of figuring out how much specifics would cost, uh, that may be something that we can go high on, and I don't know that it is the job of our commission to put a dollar amount on the resources that we were requesting from council. But certainly, um, asking staff to make that request to them, and then coming up with, um, potential scopes of, of work that those would cover, is, is something that we can do tonight. And I think rather than putting it off another two weeks, and then waiting around to come back, and, and still not being able to, um, address the substance of what we need to do would be a problem, and so I'd like to propose that we request that staff, um, address our need for additional resources for more expertise and information to council. And presumably then the council would direct staff to figure out, um, what that involves. But we, we would need to get an affirmative response from council that, that, um, resources, uh, up to a given level may be available.
So, are you suggesting that, that we do that, um, generally on these, like, say, six categories that we just kind of outlined as the hot topics off of that list, or the whole list?
Six or eight or the whole list? I, 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 I think that if, if we're not coming up with specific amounts, um, and that staff is going to be able to help us weight them in terms of, how much it's going to cost, that we, we can basically send this list, um, and say that these have all been identified as areas where we need more information. And to request, um, available resources for them, um, without necessarily having to specify the amount at this point. That's something I think, I think that staff can help with.
David, does that sound workable? Or how would that work from a staff perspective? Do you, would that be enough direction for you to go to city council? Would that be the, the next outcome from us selecting six items from this list that we need more resources or discussion about?
Let me make sure I understand the task. So you identify six or eight, and then staff identifies the scopes that would address those six or eight, and make that request to the city council. Did I capture that?
That, that, that could work, as long as it doesn't mean that we're not going to address the others.
It would definitely mean that, it, it would not mean that we wouldn't address the others. I think the question is, we may be able to answer some of our questions with a review of material that we already have. Like, when it comes to wastewater or sea level rise, we may be able to schedule time to review materials in many cases that we've already had, uh, before us, and that, that may answer our questions. I think, I, I think form-based code is a piece where we need the most help and we have the least existing sort of resources on it. So... So I guess, I guess, part of the job for staff then would be to identify which areas possibly like sea level rise. We've already got studies that we can bring to that discussion, and which areas most certainly like form-based code are going to require, uh, some additional spend on the part of the city council.
So, can I ask a question, because I'm lost in the process? We were asked as a planning commission to give input, but we covered with just two planning commissioners, six of them. Is there any way to still add one on there, or maybe it's there and I'm not seeing it? But I really feel like we need resources from the Arcade of Fire District. I know we talked about doing, um, the, um, the study, but I, is it in there?
Yeah, so I, I added, uh, your standards of coverage study, uh, to the list of possible solution sets here. Certainly if the, you know, you know, I think that there's a more detailed discussion, you know, than we can have tonight on that particular item that we, uh, would need to have before the commission as a whole, would recommend that as a, uh, you know, something that you feel like you need to finalize your decision. Of the things that are listed here, you know, but we are tracking it, so it's definitely on the list.
Could I just ask one more question, because I might forget it? I know that you addressed saying that the survey would be one of the solutions that would be identified after. So, this isn't the time to say that's a resource that we need, because...
You certainly could, yeah.
Because, I mean, it's a monetary thing. Because, I mean, it's a monetary thing, and if there's going to be money decisions, if it's not included, then it's not going to be funded. So I'd like to make sure that that's at least in there.
But tonight is not the only time we're going to look at this list and discuss-
I know, but I didn't only put one in. I'd like to add a second one if I could.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, you know, the, you know, the, the list, again, we didn't get to the portion of this hearing where you would go through and vote on each of the solution sets to decide whether you want to include that or not. So I think if you, if you want to take some action tonight, you should find some solution sets that, you know, the majority and hopefully, you know, the, you know, you know, consensus, you know, that you would come to consensus on, that we want to recommend these as moving forward actions. And then we can have a follow-up where we continue this discussion to flesh out the stuff that needs more, more dialogue. I would say with regard to what's on the list right now, you know, we're going to find, you know, staff is going to certainly recommend that, you know, these four topic areas, liquefaction, sea level rise, wastewater treatment, and capacity and vulnerability, we have information in the record or are preparing information in the record to address all of the concerns, and we do not believe that we need an additional study for these. We think that through, you know, the studies that we have, conversations with staff, and potentially, you know, with some of these topic areas, bringing forward, you know, some experts to, to have conversations with the planning commission, you're going to get to a point where you feel you can make decisions. So I don't think that there's necessarily a heavy lift on, you know, I mean, each of these items is going to have a staff capacity issue. They're all going to have some, you know, financial element, but none of these are heavy lifts.
So we're not excluding bringing in experts. That's going to be part of the solution.
Yeah, but exactly.
And we don't, you want us to identify that tonight, you said?
You have not gotten to the point yet, though, with each of these topic areas where you can say, this is specifically the solution that I want. For each of these topic areas, liquefaction and geotech, you may say, I'm pretty comfortable with the, the list of items that we have planned here to address this topic. It'd be great to have, you know, a, you know, geologic engineer come and talk to us about this, just so that we can hear, you know, from their perspective. So then we could work to bring that forward. You haven't had that conversation yet. We don't have an item in mind for how we address that. From staff's perspective, we've already addressed that topic. We feel like that question has been answered. If there's still an open question in the commission's mind, and you feel like there's something that you need, a resource that you need to close that loop, or if you feel like through the process of trying to show the, the, the work that you've done to the community, those are valid, perfectly valid reasons for asking for additional resources, then you should identify those. I can't walk away from this meeting knowing that you want more on liquefaction and geotech and know specifically how to address that for you. We're going to need to have a follow-up conversation for that. If you tell me I want the form-based code to be, you know, put forward as a recommendation to include that additional scope, that's clear direction for me. I know exactly what to do to, to effectuate that. So that's, there's kind of, they're on different levels.
So might we, as a group right now, just want to tackle one or two of these and see if we can just flesh out so that you have more direct? That'd be great information.
I think that's better, because I don't think we're going to have time to propose the solutions and the resources we need to get through more than one or two.
So which one or two do you guys want?
I think we should start with form-based code myself and make a request that we get expanded time from the city's consultant to help us incorporate concerns about architecture, I mean, just all, all the, that just feels like the biggest piece. And I think it's going to allow, answer a lot of questions for the planning commission, but also the public.
Yeah, first, I think maybe given the scope of it, we should stop calling it the form-based code and call it the gateway code, because a number of the things that you've identified don't have to do with, you know, that, that outward-facing form. They're, they're basically code. And I think it would be a relatively simple thing to go through our list and identify a list of things that would need to be addressed in code with expertise that would require some outside facilitation that would then cost the city money and to ask staff to request it on our behalf from the city council.
So then I'd like to request Heather Equinos as an outside facilitator. Is that what we're talking about?
I, I think basically there, the city has engaged a consultant who has then engaged some subcontractors.
Heather is our current consultant.
Yeah, to, to provide help in discussing and writing and reviewing the code. And that, at this point, we don't really need to go a whole lot further than that to request help in the form of additional money from council. And the staff is, is pretty well able to figure out how much that would involve at a minimum.
So you've identified form-based or gateway code as important for you. I feel like what's important for me is to address the sea level rise and wastewater treatment plant, or an, an infrastructure, which would include the Arcade Fire District.
It's not so much that we don't think those are important. The question is, I don't know that we have time this evening to say, these are all of the things we need to be able to answer our concerns about sea level rise.
I'm ready with my list.
I, I would like to, on the form-based code, I didn't know that we got closure on it. Hear from staff whether or not you feel like you have enough direction. I know we're being pretty vague, and it's partly because we don't know what will get us from here to there on form-based code.
I think I hear a proposal on the table. I hear general support for it, but it'd be great to get, you know, an action on that and say, yes, we're going to request the plan, the city council-
All right. Can I, just for clarity, will Ben Noble be coming up here? Is he the best person to, you know, be here giving us a presentation and doing a question and answer kind of thing? Or is that already in the plan? I, a little vague about that.
I don't know. Ben, if you're not asleep, if you want to address some of that, we have discussed it a little bit, so. Go ahead, Ben.
I am not asleep, but I am trying to turn my camera on, if I can do that. This is interesting. Sorry.
While Ben's finding the camera, I will, we'll see.
Right. So I'm here. I guess David asked me to be here tonight to, to help answer any questions that you might have about how to move forward on this.
Yeah, and I think the, the question was, you know, would you come up and do sessions in person here, you know, with this expanded scope?
Right, yeah. I'm happy to do that if we think that that's a good use of the budget. It's cer, it's certainly something that I can do. I think, you know, there's a benefit to be, being in person for meetings to help go through a lot of these details. So I think that that's certainly something that we can include in the scope if it's, if it's a priority. I think another part of this is having sort of the design support and the graphic support to prepare, prepare the graphic materials that are going to help to sort of facilitate a discussion of what it is exactly that we want to regulate through the gateway code, and then also to illustrate those standards in a way that's, you know, easy for the user to understand. So I think that would be potentially a, a beneficial add-on as well.
Can we get that into, does that need to be a motion that we are going to make? Or how, what's the best way for us to transmit that to you, to transmit to the city council?
Yeah, I think, you know, again, a motion and a formal vote would be a perfectly fine way of, of doing that. And the motion would be something to the effect of, you know, you know, the, the planning commission, you move to make a recommendation to the city council that they authorize additional scope with the form-based code to increase engagement and, you know, work product.
Does someone want to make that motion?
Could I just-
I'll make that motion. Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to ask a question. I know that you said that in-person was ideal. I guess my question is, how much more is it going to eat up the budget by having in-person versus doing a Zoom with supportive graphics and all the charts and everything that we need? Just trying to weigh that.
Ben, do you have a quick response to that?
Yeah, I, I would say that, that the, the additional cost for in-person meetings is probably a couple of thousand dollars per meeting as opposed to a Zoom meeting.
And so we can flesh that out also as we go through the process, you know, specifically what those, you know, what that scope would look like. We had discussed last time, I think, if I remember correctly, Commissioner Tagney had brought forward the question about having the next form-based code engagements as a planning commission session, like, would it be possible to have them as a planning commission? And, you know, certainly the answer is yes. I mean, we had designed them, you know, differently, partially because they're on Zoom, but I think we're kind of demonstrating that we can, you know, we can do these hybrid meetings and more complex hybrid meetings. So if that's of interest to the planning commission, we could, you know, make sure that those happen and, and build that also into the ongoing form-based code engagement if we expand that scope. And some of those could be in-person if it was, you know, desirable.
I, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just going to ask if, if someone had a motion to make that request.
I, I, I think that the substance of what we would be doing is more important than the format. Actually, it could be that, you know, if we would get Ben Noble up here, it would be more worth our while to do a day-long workshop than, you know, to ask him to travel for a two-hour evening meeting. And that the forms of those workshops are, that's something that we can discuss at a future meeting, but I would like to introduce a motion to direct staff to request resources to develop with outside expertise in a scope of work to expand funding to develop the gateway code.
In the form of a workshop?
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to specify the-
Details to follow.
I, I think that that's something we should discuss later.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 A quick question, follow-up question on that, just in terms of our next steps. I'm assuming this means we don't want to move forward with any of the workshops that were outlined in the, in the stuff.
I think I was thinking above and beyond those workshops.
Okay, so in addition to, okay. So we're going to move forward with those for now.
Yep, correct.
Point of clarity, is he coming up for those workshops?
At this point, we don't have him scheduled to come up. We don't have a budget for that currently.
So this would be a separate, all right. If, I mean, if it helped for us to schedule what we're requesting back-to-back with something else he needs to do here anyway, that would be nice.
And it sounds like they will not be at planning commission unless there's a motion for that, because we do want to start planning for it now.
We can work out the details later. I think we have a motion and a second.
And a vote.
And you're all in favor. And so then you do want us to reserve some time to have a public comment before you close this. Certainly you can time limit it. We had, you know, public participation through the, the process, but want to make sure that you, you are mindful of that as well.
Yeah, I would like to shift to taking public comment now and picking this discussion back up at our next meeting. Do, does staff need something more on that, David?
Nope.
Okay. Given that, I will move to public comment. And as it's 9:30, I think I will limit that to two minutes. If there's anybody here or online that would like to make comments.
Hello. Obviously, this has been a very long night. I appreciate all the discourse and discussion. I think this is in the right direction. And I do think it's a good idea to move forward with some, maybe a little bit more interactive when the public's involved in the form-based code process, just so. I felt like the first, the first forum or whatever you would call it with Ben Noble was, was really helpful, because it started to flush out some discussion and things were asked. And, and I think it can come in at a certain level where the public can get engaged and, and it won't hamper. I think it can actually inform and a few things can be worked out without slowing the process down. So I, hopefully that'll come through, because otherwise the second one seemed more like a webinar, and I don't think it was as helpful. I mean, a little bit of things came through. And I think it was good educational for people who are getting their first look at it. But for somebody who had already been involved, I, I felt it was a little bit of a step backward. So I think this, moving forward, that'll be a step in the right direction. And then, I guess, in the Slido poll tonight, I think the one reference to the community engagements at the community center, that two-day event that was pointed out there, was more of the fact that it, because it didn't really get flushed out when you guys were talking about it, was there was, and however you tabulate it, a lot of people were tabulated as showing that the interest at that meeting at that point was that it was for four stories. And I think that was a point that was being made. And also with the Slido that came across and a number of people who did also state the point for four stories. And I know you've got to think about the community and what's going to work for, ultimately for building and what's going to work, but I think that has to be taken into account when you do land on a number. So hopefully this was just an exercise tonight, and you're still maybe thinking about what that number is you might land on in certain areas slightly higher, but, you know, consider those really high buildings right now is, is not, I think, what's coming across for most people. Anyway, thanks again. It was a really healthy discussion tonight.
Thank you very much.
The issue that you're not addressing is, is the coastal commission, and they have, I emailed you all as far as the specific law regarding their position that, you know, the height of the buildings are very important from the standpoint that they clearly want, you know, a vision of the bay. So I think you're on a collision course with the coastal commission. And I think they've also expressed this in the North Coast Journal on September 29th, when they were talking about the Snyder Project. And they specifically, the office here with the manager, Melissa Kramer, brought this issue up and quoted that. So if they're having an issue with a one-story building with visuals on the bay, they're certainly going to have a problem with what you're doing here by tentatively approving seven stories. So, you know, I, I know that this is a big concern of theirs, and it's not being addressed at all. You seem to just think that this is your, your call, but the coastal commission will be involved in the coastal zone. And so this is going to be something that has to go through them. So how can you go ahead and improve that without even having a conversation? So I'm a little confused why, you know, early on, you just didn't have a, you know, a rough conversation as why, what, what are the parameters of this? You've had a lot of conversations with the wastewater treatment plant and talked to their staff, I know that, but in this particular case, you haven't done that. So it seems like a big gamble and a lot of time is going into this, and you're going to be probably denied if, if it's really at seven stories and six stories. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yes, good evening. Thanks for all the work you're doing. I'm going to be real quick. I think the issue, one of the issues here is of public perception, not facts. David said, from the disaster effective, we feel these questions have already been answered. That may be true, but not to the public satisfaction, such as the community engagement report. He says it was not compiled the way they would have liked it to be compiled. I disagree. It's disingenuous to say that. I think it was not compiled one little bit. The building enassing presentation, number three, I think needs to be removed. It has a map and discussion of vacant properties that are not vacant. The, I wrote, city staff is not telling the whole story. That's a little too brief. But as an example, street parking, the, what's shown in the previous December draft plan and current draft plan is what David calls a high level. It's not an actual quantity of streets. You can count them. I can count them. There's a reduction, I think, of about 40% of street parking, but someone needs to do it, if not me, then staff. The new draft has no visualizations. I was hoping for some 3D modeling in there. There's a blank page in the December. There's a blank page in the December draft and continued a blank page now. The colors are good, but it requires a color printer. I know it would be a little more work for staff, but if it could be added the initials of the committee following each comment, that would be helpful. The actual line from the fourth sentence of the Brown Act, "The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know." I think that this draft plan should be held back for another two weeks or so until all the information can be in it, not partial information, not just the information that comports, which is a terrible word, in my opinion, comports with the previous draft plan. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody online? Anyone online, David?
Go ahead, Matt.
Hi, everyone. This is Matt Simmons. I'm with the Redwood Coalition for Climate and Environmental Responsibility. About a year ago, Rocker wrote a letter about the Gateway process that warned that we were heading towards a series of meetings that didn't go anywhere. It feels like that letter came true. I think we all just sat through a three-and-a-half-hour meeting about what future meetings to have. I think if you continue to meet at the pace you've been meeting at and you go through all the topics you just talked about, this plan won't be approved until like 2025, maybe? I don't know, because if the standard is everyone has to be happy with everything in the plan, it'll just never be approved. And, you know, all the meantime, the housing affordability crisis and the climate crisis are going to continue. You know, people are going to keep getting priced out because we aren't building enough housing to keep up with demand. And people aren't going to be able to walk and bike to work. And, you know, people will just move farther away and drive to their jobs. And we'll just have more traffic and more greenhouse gas emissions. And I just don't feel like anyone in this room is hearing any of that or thinking about any of that. And I don't understand why. So, yeah, that's, those are my comments. Aye.
Thanks, Matt. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hello, thank you. Three things, I'll try to keep them brief, is one, I believe this meeting with the Slido was a good step forward because it allowed for some compilation of the different things that people are talking about. Second thing is that the January meeting being input to the public record, I believe, is, people want that because it's in the public record. It's great that Fred compiled it because it's of interest, but it's actually the city's job to record it. And then number three, I think one thing that should have made it in the top six, if not be like abroad, number one, is the character of Arcata. And for me, I know that's a complicated and nuanced thing. I keep bringing it up. But how can we protect our local business economy and the culture of our town in a time of great transition? I would like to please recommend that all of you give that some thought because my fear personally is that we get a lot of people renting from a small number of people. The economic scarcity is created when those people can't put money into the local businesses that they might have if, if there was a little more competition in the market. And then we lose local businesses to more corporate franchises, which is kind of a disturbing thought to myself and I'm sure many other Arcata residents is we've already gotten two more franchises in town when something I believe a lot of us have been proud of is the anti-franchise law. So how can we protect these aspects of our culture when they're a great change? Please consider that. We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Go ahead, Jane.
Hi, thank you all for hanging in there this late. It's been very interesting. I think the process has been useful because it's allowed for public input as well as a variety of ideas. And you sorted them out and pulled them together into topics and subtopics, which is good. I will hope you leave that discussion open to get input from the other two commissioners when they come back so that they have an opportunity, so that when you start up next time, you have an opportunity to revisit this discussion, even if it's in summary form, and they have an opportunity to provide their input. I think it's also important to let RGA actually do a brief 10-minute talk-through of their presentation so that it's understood because that was a multi-page presentation and Judith only seemed to have one page. So I think the entire thing was in the packet. But the detail that she was inquiring about was actually on, in the presentation and could be discussed before you vote one way or the other. So I, I'd like to see that opportunity be given. And I definitely think it's useful to understand the feasibility of the building heights by understanding what's really going on with soil liquefaction, liquefaction and sea level rise. So it's maybe premature to decide on building heights until you basically have that understanding of the feasibility and the implications of those two factors.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Chris.
Hello, Chris Richards here. Thanks for all your work tonight, moving forward. It's good that you have made it through the process to the point where you will be reaching out for counsel to help staff get the additional help, to get you the information you need. It would have been nice to have this happen long ago, but anyway, the process works the way it does. I really feel that the Form-Based Code process is going to require a lot of funding and a lot of time, but you really don't want to put that in front of all of the basic work with all the decisions, with discussions and topics that are up at the top of your pecking order there. So, you know, I think it's good that you can get some extra funding to start working towards getting that together for when you get to that. But certainly I hope you don't jump ahead with the process and start working on that before you get these basic details hammered out. And of course, it's good you're keeping the community involved with this. You can always do as much as you can and the more you do, the better, obviously, to get the buy-in for where, whenever you get to some final product. So anyway, thanks again for all your work. And I, I hope my words help you with some clarity. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP. You've heard me say before that density is key to healthy and clean transportation. And I'm going to say that again because it's important and it's true. Of course, density or not, we can and we have to build safe and comfortable streets for people who are already walking, biking, rolling, riding the bus because, you know, we deserve safety and comfort, just like anyone else. But the research is clear that if we want significantly more people to choose those modes of transportation, density is a necessity. We can't just wish that away and say that we prioritize these low-carbon modes of transportation while at the same time maintaining 90-some zoning rules that enforce low-development densities. It won't work. I've attended a lot of meetings about the Gateway Plan at this point. And I've heard people say they don't want tall buildings. But I've heard very few clear explanations of exactly what it is about tall buildings that are objection, that's objectionable. Most of the concerns that were discussed tonight, for example, although it was in the context of building height, have no clear nexus with building height as a policy matter. And one that appears to have a nexus that has been discussed a lot, the technical feasibility, as I think you all know, as, you know, planners, is not really relevant to the policy issue at hand because planning and zoning lays out restrictions and incentives on what can be built, but doesn't mandate building. And technical feasibility can only be assessed on a project-by-project basis, considering the details of the site and what's proposed to be done on it. So I would encourage you to support denser, taller buildings and be very clear about the decisions that you're making. And please move along with this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Okay, hi. So we keep here in community development staff repeating the phrase, "conversion of L Street to a one-way road." Maybe you, you guys might know this, but there's only an L road between 10th and 7th Street. So you can convert L Street to a one-way road, but it will only get you three blocks. It's not going to get you the other seven blocks that get you from Samoa to Alliance. So we're only talking about 30% of the road is a conversion of L Street. The rest is all brand-new road. So just, I hope you guys understand that. As far as construction impacts, concerns from the public goes that we heard of earlier, you have to consider that what happens in the EIR does not cover everything. I noticed this during the construction of the Creamery Road Townhomes that went through the EIR process. There were concerns about contaminated soils on that site from historic uses. However, as I watched the equipment move around this dirt on a windy day, I watched the northwest winds blow all that dust to my neighbor's house and to Little Learner's preschool. There was so much dust that I had to use wiper fluid every time I got in my vehicle. It's a lot of dust. So I wouldn't put all your faith in the EIR as far as construction impacts because you, you have to realize we're talking about impacts in real life, like potentially poisoning the preschool and surrounding residents. Also, the guy from Rocker just talked about how Gateway will solve the climate crisis. But isn't the crisis about humans living in the path of sea level rise? I mean, that's not the only thing, but that's a major concern of the climate crisis. And doesn't the Gateway Plan exacerbate that issue by putting large populations right in the target of sea level rise? So to me, that comment is, that sounds like a contradictory statement there.
Thank you for your comments.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, thanks. I, sorry I had to tap out. I had to go home. But I'm, yeah, I think just, probably just the main comment. I think Jane kind of clarified some things that were in the packet for Judith that elaborated a little bit more. And maybe if we do get the opportunity to share a little bit more, we can give some examples of how a topic work group could work. And we could choose one of the topics, like sea level rise, as an example, that we can kind of walk ourselves through. To a lot of us from the outside, it doesn't make any sense to be constructing things in the path of sea level rise. That's not a, as a environmental advocate, that makes no sense to me to invest infrastructure into places that are going to be underwater in 30 years. And so we really need to kind of address that in a clinical way and make sure that we're not, you know, we're kind of like focusing on all these details now. But if, if we can't build something there because it's going to be underwater in 30 years, groundwater level is going to be rising so that those aren't really feasible, we should figure that out now and identify those sorts of things. And a, and these topic work groups could address that in a way that's transparent to the public. I'm just worried that, you know, hearing that staff already has all this figured out, you know, "Don't worry about it. We've got it handled," is not really building any trust with the community. And that's where the topic work group approach could be really helpful because we want to solve these problems and not just let them fester and keep talking about them over and over and over again. We want to try to solve these things. So lastly, I was a little skeptical of the whole Slido process, but I think it was good just to kind of get some of these ideas out. And I think that I'd also like you to take a look at the table that we put together at the end of the advisory committee presentation that has a table of things that we've identified that should also be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if you could allow me just 30 seconds to address a couple of the comments that came up.
Please.
A couple repeatedly about, you know, something that we said about the studies that are identified there. You know, your, your staff have gone through decades with some of these projects and been involved in multiple studies. We have the institutional knowledge around the work that we've done, you know, to address these issues. And so when I say that, you know, we believe that these issues have been thoroughly vetted at the staff level and we're comfortable with the information we're bringing forward, we also recognize that not everybody has that same institutional knowledge, which is why we encourage you to continue to have discussions around these topics and share with the public that institutional knowledge, to bring people along. And so I think it would be wrong to characterize this perspective as saying that, "Don't worry about it. Staff has this figured out and you don't need to do anything else." What I'm trying to inform you and the public is quite the opposite. That, you know, your staff, your professional staff, every, every person that I work with in the city is working on so many amazing projects. You know, none of that is getting highlighted or daylighted, you know, through these conversations. And I think this is a good venue for doing that. So I just wanted to kind of correct the record on that. There's, you know, maybe, you know, maybe taking a little out of context. I also wanted to point out, because I think there's some confusion, that Commissioner Mayer doesn't have the full RGA proposal. She has the entire packet. I think she referenced one of the pages, just to be clear.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I, I agree that I think, I look forward to the opportunity of giving us all a chance to discuss the work and studies and experience of staff with the public being able to see. I think that's going to help everyone get up to speed closer to where staff has been working on. That's where a very long time is. No more public comments?
No more.
At that point, I would like to move to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from Planning Commission members this evening?
I think we all need to think ahead about the dates that conflict with or in proximity to Thanksgiving and the winter holiday. And if, if everybody starts to wrap their mind around that, I think they're going to be asking us at the next meeting what we're going to do about it, if we're going to set up an alternate date.
Good reminder.
What that looks like.
Good reminder. Anybody else with any correspondence, staff?
The only thing I wanted to mention is that this Friday, the Institute of Local Government Planning Commission training is happening. And so I want to make sure that you're all signed up. If you're not, please do so. You can reach out to me and I can help you coordinate on that. That's all I have.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.